Elementary. If you just stand. No, no, let's just stand over there for now. Ethan Carbone, Children's Reading Center Child's School. Jensen Whitlock, who was student of the month in December, Hillcrest Academy. Come on in. Oh, oh. Jamari Williams, Hillcrest Academy. Aubrey Hebert, James A. Long Elementary. Aiden Fells, Kelly Smith Elementary. Hayden Boyd, Mellon Learning Center. Jermaine Carr, Mellon Learning Center K through 12. Melody Morales, Mosley Elementary. Traylin Baker, Penile Bath. Hayden Gill, Putnam Academy Vots and Sciences. Hakeem Lowe, Putnam Classical Academy from December.
Yeah, that's Jose.
I don't force anybody. A little bit. Warner Nail, Putnam Classical Academy. Scarlett Monses, Little Sprouts Learning Center. Jose Vasquez, Little Sprouts Learning Center.
Is that Kelly Smith?
Um, Kelly Smith, Hayden Gill we have, Hakeem Lowe came in, Aiden Spells. Okay, Kelly Smith. These are the extras. Thank you all. Now we're going to take photos. Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Present.
And Mayor Correa.
Present, we have Quorum on to approval of minutes for December 12th, 2024 meeting and December 18th, 2024 special call meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Our motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. We're going to move on to public recognition presentations. We have a pro- a few proclamations actually, and I'll get down. Our first proclamation, City of Palaca proclamation, whereas the Charmettes Inc. is a distinguished national civic organization that was founded on June 17th, 1951 by Gwendolyn Baker Rogers and Frankie Drayton Thomas with a vision to unite women for the betterment of their communities. And whereas today, the Charmettes Inc. stands as a nationally recognized organization with chapters across the southeastern United States, advancing its mission to empower women in enhanced communities. Whereas the St. John's Putnam Flagler Chapter of the Charmettes was established in 1974 by Doris H. Blackshear and a group of dedicated women from these counties and officially installed by National President Dr. President Dr. Eva Wanton on February 8th, 1975. Whereas the chapter's commitment to service is evident in its ongoing support for education, health, scholarships, community development, and a significant accumulation of donations of over $1 million to cancer research at the Howard University Cancer Center. And whereas the St. John's Putnam Flagler Charmettes continue to exemplify the power of sisterhood and community, inspiring women throughout their dedication and unwavering commitment to make a difference. And now therefore, I, Robert M. Correa, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby recognize and celebrate the 50th anniversary of the St. John's Putnam Flagler Charmettes and extend our deepest congratulations and heartfelt appreciation to the Charmettes Inc. for their extraordinary service to the community, lasting impact on public health and education, and continued leadership in fostering unity and progress among women. And when this I have undo, send my hand, because the CEO of City of Palaca, and the, excuse me, fix this 9th day of January in the year of 2025, City of Palaca. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Charmette, present, please come up. If you want to say a few words about the Charmettes.
As we said, we're, we're getting ready to celebrate our 50th year in the community. The, the local chapter, we sponsor, support, and finance with the Bread of Life, Domestic Violence, Lee Conley House, the, the nursing homes and the schools. We do scholarships, et cetera. And we are built to last in this community, supporting our community at full.
Thank you. Our next pro- proclamation is in honor of Arbor Day. Whereas Arbor Day is observed throughout the nation and the world in recognition of the many benefits of trees. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhancing economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City of Palaca was proudly a Tree City USA, now therefore I, Roberta M. Correa, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim January 17th, 2025 as Arbor Day in the City of Palaca. And we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to, motion to approve.
We have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Is there anybody here from the Tree Committee or for Arbor Day?
Well, we are always very appreciative of the support of the city for Arbor Day. And we do partner with the St. John's River State College. And so we'll be doing the same thing this year. And we appreciate, and we'll be reading the proclamation at that event as well. So thank you all.
And the next proclamation is in honor of Reverend Dr. Luther King Jr., Martin Luther King Jr., excuse me. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union through his teachings, which continue to guide and inspire us. And whereas Dr. King advanced the cause of civil rights throughout the South despite the dangers associated with his work. Locally, while taking part in the St. Augustine Civil Rights Movement, Dr. King was arrested on June 11th, 1964 on the steps of the Monson Motel Restaurant. His famous letter from the St. Augustine Jail to his friend Rabbi Israel Resner urging him to recruit rabbis to come to St. Augustine resulted in the largest mass arrest of rabbis in America history on June 18th, 1964 at the Monson Motel. And whereas Dr. King once said, "We have an opportunity to make America a better nation. I may not get there with you, but I want you to know tonight that we, as a people, will get to the promised land." Though we have made great strides since the turbulent era of the Civil Rights Movement, Dr. King's work and our journey remain unfinished. And whereas we recognize that our nation is yet to reach Dr. King's promised land, this is not an admission of defeat, but a call to action during these challenging times. And whereas by making our communities better with increased opportunity for all, and by breaking the cycle of poverty and reinvesting in our schools, we carry on Dr. King's work and unlock our children's potential, which is our strongest weapon against injustice and inequality. Now therefore, I, Roberta M. Correa, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, proclaim January 20th, 2025 as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in commemoration of a civil rights leader who dedicated his life to others. And we call upon our citizens to ask ourselves, what Dr. King believed to be life's most urgent and persistent question, what are you doing for others? By lifting up our brothers and sisters through dedication and service, we honor Dr. King's memory and reaffirm our common humanity. And when this there, I, I'm not going to read that rest. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And.
Okay, I think there is something that I would like to say, that there will be a bunch of recognizing Dr. King on next Saturday at the Cavalry Life Center. And you're welcome to come.
Good afternoon to the commission, mayor.
It doesn't sound like it, testing. It's working now.
It's working now. To the commission, to the mayors, interim city manager. We stand before you today on behalf of our steering committee that we put together as it relates to the Newtown Grant, the grant for historic preservation of $610,000 that was brought in from the state, as well as additional funds that started out at $390,000 that were presented to the city. Today is just a compilation of what happened with the visiting statement, with the visiting plan, as well as some of the things that we've been working on in collaboration in hopes of creating additional partnership with the city. As you can see, our mission statement is to educate, inspire, and to engage individuals of all backgrounds through exhibitions of educational programs, community engagement, and partnerships in an effort to preserve the past and promote inclusivity. Next slide. We had a visiting session on November 18th. We had about 50 individuals who came out. We had several, Commissioner Borum, Commissioner Campbell, who came to that session. And it was a great session. It gave us an opportunity for citizens to come in and actually give input. And so you'll see in this, you see A. Philip Randolph, as well as Robert H. Jenkins in this slide. Next slide, please. The session was held inside of the gym. These are the areas that we discussed during the course of that session, education, agricultural sports, oral history, which talks about how we preserve the history through collaborations where Peter Willett has started doing recordings for us for people, seniors particularly, to make sure that we memorialize the stories that they have of Palaca, also government-elected officials and historic events. Next slide. And these are some of the results that came from that. And this is the input that came from citizens, which included names of different individuals that talked about historic events. And it also went through, and we continue with this input, and we're going to continue this collaboration. And we're going to do this in various places throughout the city. Next slide. And again, this is a picture of how we did it with the posties, to put those in place and to move forward. Next slide. Next slide. And so the Newtown Museum and Cultural Center of Palaca is just one of the names that we put out there as a way to look at it. Most of us know that Newtown was the red line district created in downtown Palaca that went from Oak to Madison, from 8th to 11th. And it gives a real distinctive history of what was there. It's a place that housed many of our great businesses throughout. And it gives an identity as to where we are. And with the help of Kenneth Davis, his creation of the logo and things of that nature, it creates a wonderful opportunity. What we're hoping for with the City of Palaca is for the opportunity for us to develop a holding company no differently than what we're doing with the Laramie Arts Center, where you've got an organization that's able to contract with the city for the purposes of providing these services. The intellectual properties is a very critical piece. We've visited various museums throughout the, throughout the area, including Gainesville, where you have the A. Quinn Jones Center, which is owned by the city, but also has a certain, has a collaboration which works in the same way. Our hope is that we're able to create a memorandum of understanding between both the Newtown Steering Committee and the city, because we understand that in a small community, resources are very limited, and you don't necessarily have enough staff to be able to fully man a museum on a regular basis. We will want to get to a point where we are able to sit down collectively and write a vision together so that we can have this, so that we can budget, and we can put things in place through the money that's already been allocated for this, and have a community partner who will long-term ensure that the history of Palaca is forever preserved. And so that's our ask today. I want the members of the committee to stand up who are present, being recognized. And I'm going to turn the rest of it over to Madam Chair, Ms. Audrey Wise, who will come forward at this time and, and ask me, and do any questions.
Good evening. We're asking not only this council, but the City of Palaca to walk with us. How unique is this presentation at this date, as Madam Mayor, you stood and gave a proclamation for Martin Luther King Day? How unique is Newtown is this presentation at this moment in time? We're asking you to walk hand in hand with us as we explore the possibility, the reality of this small hovel of a town that has so much history that is just lurking to be called and bought in one spot. We want to inspire the youth. We want to inspire those who have gone before us, and those are still alive. Those are still alive that want to see history walk in time. So we're asking you to see this vision that we have as an advisory committee that you put forth on April of last year, saying, "We need to be about preserving and restoring our culture." So we're asking you to buy into this vision, be a part of making this event, not an event, but a living history for this, this community. And I feel as though, as we bring things forth, we will see how much more we have in common than not. And I think we will all grow as a community as we unfold these things, the history of the tapestry of this small hovel of a town named Palaca. So council, come with us, walk with us, be about this vision that we have. And we're asking the community to stand with us, be with us. If you have archives, anything that can benefit all of us, not a portion of us, but all of us, because with that, we all can see a brighter future for ourselves and our children. Thank you for your time. And please come aboard this train. We're moving forward. Thank you.
I don't, I don't have a question per se to, directly to the presentees, but I do have something that I would like to bring before the dais. We did ask that we assemble this. And I know that there was a request for a workshop with regards to. I'll talk a little louder. This work, there was a request that we have a workshop with regards to what we would like to see out of Jenkins. So I think it's an opportunity. Y'all bear with us. We, we're, we're working through technical difficulties. But there, there was an ask for a meeting so that we would be able to clearly identify the vision of where we would like to see Jenkins. So I would definitely like for this to be conjoined, because again, I had the opportunity to join that workshop that evening. And just the energy alone in that facility, it was next to none. And being one of the individuals that was just soaking up some of the information, I would love for us to move forward with this in some kind of way, shape, or form. I know official action may not be able to be taken tonight, but I would love to see this as a part of the visioning session that we are looking to have for what we would want to see come out of the community center. And I'm fine with the name as well.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think we probably all concur. And that would be the next step to workshop and sit down with you folks and discuss further how to move forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So noted.
Recognition, police, and fire departments, life-saving awards, Chief Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. It is my honor, as well as Chief Taylor's honor, to have the opportunity to stand before you today, to present you with news of such performances from the ranks of the state. We don't, we don't get to very often come with good news such at this point, but when we do, we would love to be able to present it not only in front of you, but present it to the citizens of Palaca and letting them see how well and the wonderful things that our, our officers are doing. For this presentation today, Assistant Chief Matt Newcomb will be doing the honor of acknowledging our officers, and Chief Taylor will take care of the firefighters.
Good evening. Mayor Commissioners, on December thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-four Sergeant Beckton, Quentin Beckton and Officer Louis Gagliardo. Responded to a residence in the seven hundred block of North Sixteenth Street to assist an adult male who is experiencing a medical emergency. When Sergeant Beckton and Officer Gagliardo arrived on scene, they found a man unresponsive and to have no pulse. After assessing the situation, both Sergeant Beckton and Officer Gagliardo started rendering life-saving measures through CPR. By administering chest compressions and evaluation. After several rounds of alternating CPR positions. A pulse was reestablished and Palaca Fire Department. Engine One and Putnam County Rescue arrived on scene and continued to provide medical attention. While rendering medical attention, the subject's pulse was lost again and rescue then took over and began CPR and delivered an AED shock. Fire rescue staff were able to reestablish a pulse and stabilize the man for transport. At the end of this shift Sergeant Beckton contacted the hospital to check on the man's status. And the emergency room staff informed Sergeant Beckton the man was in a stable condition. And was being prepped to be transferred to another hospital for advanced treatment. First responders trained to address, to address and handle situations like this. And because of Sergeant Beckton and Officer Gagliardo's quick response, evaluation and actions, a man's life has been saved. And this is a memorandum that I wrote to Chief Shaw and I recommended that Sergeant Beckton and Officer Gagliardo received the police department's. Life-saving award. I then contacted Chief Taylor and he has a few things to say as well.
So I'll just add to that, it is the selfless acts of our local responders that saved a life on December thirteenth. The training, the swift actions and the selfless courage of our first responders that morning made all the difference. Courage to be competent, to step up and do what needs to be done. That describes the men and women that serve this community every day. I'd like to thank the commission for taking the time to recognize the valor and skill of these employees. And on Engine One that night, we had Captain Kenneth Sugden, Engineer Matt House. Firefighter Corey Alenbach and firefighter Kyle Bondra who is here with us tonight. Thank you.
Mayors and Commissioner, we have one more officer that we'd like to recognize tonight. Just a, excuse me, I'm sorry, I can't get my glasses. Just a few days after Sergeant Beckton and Officer Gagliardo. Were able to save that gentleman's life. Officer Matthew Dickerson, who's present with us tonight. On December seventeenth responded to an apartment complex on Hudson Avenue to assist a teen. A teenage male who was experiencing a medical emergency. When Officer Dickerson arrived on scene, he found the teenager lying on his back semi-unresponsive in a breezeway of the apartment complex building. Officer Dickerson evaluated the teenager. And the teen had fully lost consciousness and went unresponsive. Officer Dickerson quickly realized that the dealing, that he was dealing with a drug overdose and administered Narcan to the teenager. Within moments, the teenager started breathing and regained consciousness. Fire rescue staff then arrived on scene and took control of the medical situation and transported this teenager to the hospital. Again, first responders trained to address and handle situations like this. And because of Officer Dickerson's quick response, evaluation and act, and actions, the teen's life was saved.
City Manager and Administrative Reports Presentation, Police Department, Chief Shaw.
Yes, we, we'd like to present the Police Department, Chief Shaw.
Again, good evening Commissioner, Mayor Commissioners. My reasoning for allowing Assistant Chief to take on the recognition for them is because you guys get to hear my voice now for. Probably the next ten minutes or so. I was told I had three to five minutes, but y'all know I like to talk, so. Amanda, can we go to the police presentation, please? So in our presentation today, we're going to go over a couple of things and. We're going to talk about crime stats, our crime stats for the third quarter or up to the third quarter. Our new pilot programs or programs that we are. Looking at putting in place. Our community service for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And our building updates. After that, we'll bring what we see is going to be a prediction, a projection for the annual. Year crime stats as well as discussing some of the things that we've done over the course of several years. And to include what we're looking at doing here in the near future or have started already. With that being said, I'll move on to our, our crime stats, you go to that third slide for me, please? Um, can we make that just a tangent? So, so far for the first three quarters, which covers the months of January through September. Right now we are seeing a negative five percent decrease in crime stats. For overall, we have certain areas that we highlighted as far as the reduction. Which include drug offenses, simple assaults and all of the theft categories along with. Aggravated assaults, fraud and motor vehicle thefts. Our increases are in vandalism, motor vehicle parts thefts, intimidation and shoplifting. Our major increases in the area of shoplifting was a severe concern as we began to travel throughout the year. So we implemented a couple of things to put in place, we revamped the retail theft program. And we met with all of the retail establishments in the nineteen, Highway Nineteenth corridor. We identified our top twenty repeat offenders for retail theft. But we noticed was plaguing us tremendously in that area and met with the state attorney's office so we could. Try to bring that to a swift end and have some tougher measures for those committing those crimes. We believe that that's going to turn around and it's going to be a heavy impact. On top of that, we increased visibility by use of both officers as well as our PSA assistant. Our new pilot program, we, as we discussed with several things, we look at things that's happening throughout the year. So we look at implementing new pilot programs and one of the new pilot programs we put in is We Record. This was brought to us by our Alpha Shift with Sergeant Snyder and Lieutenant Cassidy. They both had a officer who came up with an idea he felt that would impact and wanted to do it on a small neighborhood. So we identified the neighborhood as a South Side Historic District. And through the South Side Historic District, we decided to implement this with the problems we were seeing in that area. The police department has initiated a new pilot program called We Record. The idea behind the program is to identify residents in the neighborhood who have surveillance cameras. And through voluntary cooperation, obtain any videos they may have. Of a crime or a suspect of a crime and that may be. That fled in the area or walking through the area that we'd be able to use in, in the course of an investigation. Once the crime or suspicious incident has occurred in the neighborhood, staff can follow up with those members with We Record. And see the video, see if the video is available. Now this can be done via phone, email or in person. The homeowner or tenant can then email the video to us at. We record and our email address is listed and we record at palacafl.gov. One of the things we did to initiate this program is we went door to door within the neighborhoods and we attended some of the neighborhood meetings so we can get this information out. One of the biggest things I find this positive for this is it's not only that we can receive information to help us solve crimes. Or, or issues that plague the neighborhood, we can also send out information to those individuals to let them know what's going on in the neighborhood to be aware of. So it's just a different way, not only building relationships within the community, but to get out. And provide information to that community and address issues that's going on in that community. So we were pleased that they took the initiative, identified a different answer thought outside the box. And we implemented that on a small pilot area in hopes to be able to broaden it throughout the city. And next is, on the next slide is the overview of our community service program. Can you go to, keep moving forward, keep going forward. Yep, keep going, keep going. I, I would love to start all, keep going, one more. Yeah, that's okay, they, they won't let me start all over in short on time. So, as you can see, the police department has participated in over fifty-four community outreach events and some of those events we'll name at the end. We are partaking in anything that we're invited to, I will say that. Our officers are volunteering, being very cooperative. And are on board with the police department's community engagement program. And I couldn't be more pleased at the things in the leaps that we're making. We are making tremendous amount of progress and I, 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 I'm just, I'm pleased to see what we have for the future. Some of the photos you're going to see if you move on to the next slide, you're going to see these officers participating in these programs and these. Programs or the pictures that you're going to see consist of pictures from visits to schools such as those two continue. Schools isn't in the police department. Okay, again, the trunk or treat event. And we're, again, like I mentioned, multiple events that we have for the community. We only had so many slides since this presentation couldn't be that big to. Be able to present, we just wanted to give you a taste of what we have, but again, a number of different activities that we're doing throughout the community. And I'll go into a little bit more of that here in a minute. One of the things I, I wanted to be able to thank the commission and be able to show the commission of progress on is our building upgrades. As you know, you provided us the opportunity to get our roof repaired with the approval to get our roof repaired. Allowed us to then begin addressing other issues in the building and making the building not only a better place to work, but building the morale of our, our employees that work in the building. If you look at the first picture, slide back down, if you look at the first picture from left to right, left is, is prior to. With the leaks that we had in the building, it was causing a tremendous amount of damage to the floors. So once we got the, the building, the roof taken care of, we was able to update the flooring and the flooring. Has, has, has done a remarkable, it's a remarkable change and uplifting not only the look of the building, but again, the offices, if you go to the next page. The first two pitches were the main building, these next two pitches is our detective division, our detective's division carpet, I believe. Has, was, was in place when we originally got the building and through the course of the years. We just couldn't clean it enough to make it look to where it's presentable for visitors to come in. So the opportunity to address the detective's division was a huge plus, next slide. Those are the back office for the Texas Division and as you can see, these are the front offices in the front. Welcome area for the detective's vision. That's just a portion of the things that we were able to do as far as our building upgrades, but we were able to address the outside lighting. We were just our parking lots and we were able to address a number of different issues that we had that was brought before you. We look to be able to finish up hopefully throughout the end of the year with the painting of the main building to complete it as well as our signage. As a wrap up for our projections for the course of the year for crime stats. As the end of the year comes to a close, our projections, we're looking at it to be somewhere around a negative two percent. We would know that when the information released by FDLE in March and we'll be able to bring that to you. We still are happy, although we wanted to remain at five or above, we are happy that we are still at a reduction of this year and not at an increase. Some of the activities I wanted to tell you about and just talk with you about, things that we've done to make sure these. Reductions in crime are staying in place and we can continue to move on and increase them. Things that we put in place and strategy, strategies, not only building relationships, but reducing crime in the, in the community. Has come from things we did several years ago, our community service engagement that we presented to you several years back. Has been implemented through our talking twosies, quarterly zone meetings, the Pastoral Alliance, trunk or treat, community festivals. A placopile mentoring and placopile is a huge piece for our community platform because it not only addresses. The community, but it addresses the youth in the community, you know, you gotta start somewhere. Providing them with some positive activities and things that was brought up in our last meeting. Our enforcement strategies consisted of partnering with the schools and the Putnam County Sheriff's Office, creating a major. To major crimes detective, creating the task force between the Putnam County Sheriff's Office, FDLE and ATF. Bringing in the outside agencies for both state and federal. Joining the Marshals Task Force, adding new software and technologies assists with the investigations and flock cameras. And I'm gonna pause for a minute for the flock cameras because I think it's interesting, you know. Since we've invested money in the flock cameras, you, you hear what the flock cameras have been able to produce for you throughout the year. The flock cameras gave you six hundred and twenty-seven traffic stops resulting in citations, two hundred and ten citations. A hundred and forty-four for driver's license fees, fifty-three tag fees, twenty-seven arrests made. Nine stolen cars recovered, three drug cases and twenty-two other miscellaneous events that. Are not really identified and listed under that report. But of those importance of it, we were able to recover a missing person. We were able to recover, actually we were able to cover three missing persons, which was civil alerts. The system identified a hit and run crash that we was able to track that individual back and, and make an arrest on him and have charges on them. We were able to assist in three shooting cases and, and identify suspects and targets and one of the ones where the Reed Street shooting, as you all know. That occurred recently, we were able to identify that subject, track that vehicle and make an arrest on that individual as well. We identified a burglary, a major burglary case we just had recently with the junior anglers. Tournament that just occurred, we were able to get back thousands of dollars of equipment and return it to those individuals and make an arrest on that individual who. Participated in that burglary. Some things that I felt that, that needed to be mentioned because those cameras we invested in, we said would be a huge part of what we do on our day-to-day. Adventure into at least being able to address crime and it's, I believe it's, it's making a major impact in what we do. What, what's new, we'll talk about what's new and what we looking, doing on the horizon. We have cops coffee and conversations as far as community. We record, as I mentioned earlier, and the revamped retail theft program. We have upcoming meetings with business and community to be able to talk with them about Septep program and, and many different ways that. They may be being impacted and how we can help them address their issues. The Neighborhood Improvement Program Partnership with Culture Arts and Cultural Affairs and the rest of department heads on addressing issues in the neighborhoods. And obtaining, as you know, the, the grants positions for the cops positions from the grant. Those are all things we're putting in place, we believe our cops positions, once we get them going, are, is going to magnify our community resource. And allow us to again, continue to, as you know, in the past, build part, build relationships in the community to help us. Address crime, we know that we're not the only ones who can do it, we can't. We know that we're not the only ones can do it. We can't do it by ourselves. And without the relationships and building the relationships, then we will never be able to chip chip away at it. It's one bite in the elephant and we are trying to bring as many people to the table to eat this elephant with us. So. So um it is our goal and we don't wanna stop short of just uh a piece of it. We wanna try to attack it all. And all the help we can get, you know, we're welcome to it. And again, we are um taking this in many different angles and not saying no to anything and open to hear everything. Um any approach we can get that we believe uh can help solve what we have going on in our community. We are open to partner, hear, listen and attend meetings forward and and put the action in the works. With that being said, that wraps up uh my presentation and I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Davis, do you have a question?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say that we will continue to support your continuous improvement in making Palaca safe. So looking forward to working towards that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bora?
Yes, I just wanna commend them for all the wonderful work that they've done um over the years. I mean, since uh at least I've been on commissioning prior to um every year, they continue to um raise the bar for their um service to the community sacrifices and and different things of that nature. They they stretch to every uh portion of our community, touching people in every way, not just going out just to fight crime, but doing uh other things as well, the um soft things. So um I wanna just thank these guys for everything they do, uh running to the danger when we run from it.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I did a those sentiments. I had two questions. On the crime stats that you just presented, there was a category that says uh all other crimes. What 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 are those considered to be?
So as you know, in neighbors and UCR, they capture everything that we document. So some of those can be, um I believe in on previous reports I had for you, I listed um actually out exactly what there is, such things as um. Okay, such things as as arson and things like that, uh things that's not may maybe mentioned on here, whether it be community, um I'm sorry, uh criminal mischief, uh just just it's things like that that are wrapped up that don't have an actual category that they fall in. So they wanna capture everything that falls in the area. So those are listed in another category and they're captured in that area.
So, okay. So I I saw where it was arising those. I just weren't no identified them. And the second question, it's not really a question. I um I know we had a town hall meeting, uh Commissioner Campbell, and uh it was centered around private property and either dispersment or our limitations. Just for the information purposes, could you give us two minutes and say what our limitations are for dispersment of crowds on a private, on private property? And 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 what are we doing and what are our limitations so that the public would know? Would that be appropriate?
No, no, not at all. Very appropriate, sir. So for us, um when we have um crowds that form in areas that are private, which businesses are open, it's a challenge because they have the right to to attend that public um entity. Uh so what we do is we first have to monitor, um and I'll 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 digress just a little bit and I'll go back to say, understanding these crowds may form um in a minutes of time and and we are out in the community addressing issues. We're not necessarily just waiting for them to come. The only time we we may be ahead of it is if we have received information prior and we make sure we get staff to stand by and and make sure we discourage any of that activity uh beforehand. Um but if a business is open, we cannot necessarily go in and basically tell the crowd to leave if they're partaking in that that business. Uh what we can do is monitor and identify if they're conducting illegal activity it within the crowd. And if they are, we then can disperse it. Most of the time, if the crowd is of of large nature where we need to address numbers, then we call in assistance from other departments such as the county and they'll come in and they'll help us address the crowd. Um again, not to go in our staff levels because of of other situations, but we have to do it in a manner to where we're able to do it safely and and uh not only safe for the officers, but safe for the individuals as well. So we we have a couple of different issues that we face during those times, but once we get those things identified, then our officers proceed forward and address the issues when they come up.
Right. So because at times, the business owners do not want their customers removed at some time.
That is correct, and I'm glad you mentioned that because um through the help of some of our other business owners, we are looking at putting together some meetings so we can address issues with the business. Not only just the simple um issues that we may have for parking lots or stuff like that, but we wanna also be able to address issues for uh what we what we consider Septed issues where uh it deters crime. And and that's what we're looking at going into. And that's one of the new things when we we've been approached and we are welcoming, like I said before, any assistance we can get to bring those individuals to the table, to be able to uh sit down and talk with them and identify how we can move forward and helping to prevent these things in the future.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Campbell?
Um I wanted to echo the sentiments of uh Commissioner Davis. Of course, anything that we can do to support you in your endeavors to keep our community safe or make it more safer, um we will do. But I also wanna talk to some of the things that I've witnessed firsthand, um being out with Palaca Police Department, they're talking Tuesdays. There were several Tuesdays that I went out and to the various communities and walk with them to hear the concerns of the citizens. And you'll be surprised at the feedback or the um support that they have received us as well as the quarterly zone meeting. So I commend you all for being in the presence of the community and knocking on doors um to citizens who normally probably would not get out, but still wants to have their voices heard. So I commend you all on making those efforts here in the city of Palaca. And again, anything that we can do to assist in the safety, let us know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and I concur with the other comments. And certainly, we are here to support you and make our community safe for everybody. So whatever you need, we need to just bring it forward and and work through it and make it happen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Updates, city manager search. Uh Ms. Hattie and I see Mr. Hanson is in the audience.
Yes, Mr. Hanson is here also human resources. We'll make this presentation. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, commissioners, um thank you. Um as you are aware on in October, on October fourteenth, um the commission adopted a five-phase approach for us to begin a search for a permanent city manager. We um are now in the month of January, which are we are entering phase three. Um so we have received all of the applications that we will receive as effective twelve thirty-one twenty-four. And all of the applications, you all should have received copies weekly um that were given to you all for your review during that time. Um we made sure the our new commissioner received all of that information once she was sworn in. Um so all of that part is doing, we're now on phase three to begin the screening process and to begin to do um Zoom interviews. Um once a list of candidates that we um you all desire. Uh Mr. Hanson is also here because he was the senior advisor that has been walking through, walking with me through this process to get and give me guidance on the approach to take and what to make sure all of our applicants knew. So he's here to um explain his process. He has been compiling a ranking during his process because he also received all the applications. Um rankings for your consideration or review, and you may have other ideas, but he has put it in a ranking that I will make sure that each of the commissioners get along with your own per um your decisions that you look, you desire to have for Zoom interviews. So that's where we're at now. We're on phase three and we will be in that to the end of January. Hopefully, all of if we stay on track, all of our Zoom interviews will be done. We will have a short list and then we will move to phase four. But Mr. Hanson is here to describe his process on what he uh went through to get us to this point um with our application.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh I am Jim Hanson. I'm a retired city manager. I worked forty-one years in business in four different cities uh in Florida and Georgia. Uh and now as a as a retiree, I volunteer for the Florida City and County Management Association as well as the International Association to be a senior advisor. Eight of us across the state, basically, we're not paid. We volunteer because we try to 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 be of some value to the world and hopefully be of some value to councils and and managers. Uh we do a lot of different things, recruitment in the smaller cities and counties is one of them. We try not to compete with executive search firms. They do a better job than we do. Um but um at any rate, um I've worked on numerous cities in the last seven years since I've retired uh and um uh have some some experience with this. I was asked by your staff staff for some assistance, not to do the whole recruitment like I would for usually a smaller city or county, uh but some assistance in um evaluating the resumes. Uh it's very reasonable that your staff doesn't wanna be involved in trying to rank the candidates that may include their future boss. I've come across that before. Normally, uh I work with another senior advisor. We try to get two of us together because this is such an important decision for each group that we we uh work with. Uh I brought in George Forbes and uh earlier this afternoon, we spent um quite a bit of time comparing our notes on all of your candidates and coming up with a um a a a list of um uh our evaluation of them. Uh that is in a memo. Uh your staff has that uh and I'm sure you will get it very soon. Uh in the memo, we've summarized your thirty-two candidates into three groups. Highly qualified candidates, of which there are seven. Qualified candidates, of which there are another seven, and then all the rest. In qualifications, we use both the um the items in your position, uh advertisement and profile that was sent out uh as well as our experience uh in evaluating, you know, hundreds of these um candidates. Uh and we spent a lot of time doing this. Um I imagine if you've looked at the resumes also, you you it's it's easy to get get swamped in um in details. So that that is for your consideration. Um and of course, um it's up to you to uh choose who you want to move forward with on your Zoom interviews and all of that. Um I might, a couple of other points I'd make. I know um everybody's busy tonight and I don't wanna waste your time. But I I would say to you, in my experience, your choice of who your next city manager is is probably the most important decision that you can make. Because if you can get somebody that you can work together with for some years uh and work successfully, you will be able to accomplish your goals. Uh if you get somebody that that you can't work with, it's it's often like trying to to tread through um, you know, um uh water or something like that. It it just does not work very well. So with that in mind, uh I make a few suggestions. First, move quickly. Many of these candidates are looking for other jobs. I know some of them personally are. Um you wanna have first choice. You you know, your your period has ended. You're not getting any new candidates in. So the quicker you move, the the quicker you're gonna, the more likely you're gonna be able to to get the top candidates in. Um second, have background checks done. Uh there is a search guide that uh I was in partially responsible for creating uh that's been published by the FCCMA and the League of Cities jointly. Uh and it it has a description of what you would probably wanna do. But for those candidates that you're going to Zoom interview, I'd have your staff to do at least a detailed Google check um of their back experience and everything you can find. I've seen councils that were very embarrassed to have said, who have gotten fairly far along in a process with candidates that may have something in their background that's very embarrassing. It's better that you know some of that right now uh and and cut them off and move ahead. For your final choice, obviously, you wanna do a very detailed background check. There are companies that do this. For example, checking their their credentials for their college, checking their criminal background, history, all that kind of stuff. Um also in that uh search guide is not only a description of background checks, but a number of companies that we know of that have been successfully doing that for other cities in Florida. So you can uh just make it easier for you. I'd recommend on your interview process, um a fairly elaborate process, we found this has worked for a number of cities. First, do a tour of your community. Once you bring the candidates in for that interview, the very in-person interview, have a tour of your city and have your department heads do that. Uh have them all go together in that. Uh there's a couple of reasons. One, it allows your candidates to be better knowledgeable of what's going on in your city, what the what the what the important pieces are, the strategic plan. And then when you interview them, you can get a better response from them uh in that. The other thing that most people wouldn't realize, oftentimes, your department heads will form some opinions that you may wanna hear. Ultimately, of course, it's your decision on who to choose to be your next city manager, but it's often very important to have input from other groups. I know that it it's important the decision is, I'd wanna hear from as many people as I could. Uh and oftentimes, your department heads can tell if somebody really knows their business in their in their division uh or not. And that's good feedback. Second, we recommend that you have a public reception. Um you have a very interested public here. A lot of people would probably wanna meet the candidates. Um it's a good way to have a meet and greet and that's a that's a a meeting you would wanna probably attend. Uh again, it's it's good uh public relations for the public. Uh it it shows the city off well for your candidates. Uh and maybe more importantly, it gives you the ability to watch how they interact with people. Because it's not just the resume or just how they talk to you in the interview. There's other pieces. How well do they get along with the public? You know, that's a good way to kinda judge it for yourself. Um at any rate, um you make your um finally have your interviews, make your decision on who you wanna hire as a city manager. And I would recommend you have um a a first choice and a fallback. A lot of times, you will find that uh your top choice uh may wanna, you may not be able to come to an agreement with them. Um and by the way, in our search guide, we have an an agreement in Word format to make it easy for your city attorney uh to amend um to um but while you're negotiating that, uh sometimes fellow candidates come in and want more money than was advertised. Or for some other reason, you can't come to an agreement. Maybe they'll take another job. So it's good to have a second candidate to, you know, uh so that whoever you've authorized to negotiate that contract, normally your mayor and city attorney would be the two that would work on that, uh that you can have a second candidate to fall back with. So that's um kind of a quick summary. I know you're busy tonight. Uh but we spent a lot of time in in reviewing these candidates and um uh I I hope it's helpful to you. Again, it's a very, very important decision and I deeply respect all the elected officials I've worked for over all the years and um in making what is a very complex decision, you know, not just what's their background, but how well are they gonna do in your city? How well are they gonna work with you to get done what you need? So, but any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Commissioner, no. Commissioner Jones?
Go ahead, madam.
Commissioner.
Commission.
Commissioner Davis?
No questions, but I really do wanna thank you for your guidance and support of our process so that it can be as thorough as possible. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Jones?
I I do have a a question. And it's uh Mr. Hanson, in the uh in the plan, I don't see a plan that you're gonna speak to any of the the mayor or the commission to see what type of uh city manager that we're actually looking for, um because they will be working directly up under the commission, the mayor. So I think that's a piece that may be missing in what you're doing. Now, I thank you for what you're doing, but I think that's a important piece to also see if it's a good fit. So everything else is fine, but there's a piece or or tell me if that's something that is coming forth, but you just failed to mention.
Well, my evaluation, I I did not give give you a detailed description of how I go about it, much less the other senior advisor that was involved. Uh I rated them not only on what was in your job uh position profile, like um uh the college education experience and years of experience in progressively responsible positions. Uh I also rated them on the experience they've got in the various departments that you might have, public safety, public works, uh those sorts of things. Um now, um I also rated them in in a few other things like the looks of their job history. You know, they have short tenures. Um you know, have they have they have they not been able to keep to hold a job for more than a couple of years at a time? Uh that's what they they have similar experience in cities the size of Palaca. A number of questions like that that I have evaluated as well as my uh my partner that did it also. Now, other things like uh your strategic plan, the best way for you to get that information is to see that it is included in the questions that you would ask your candidates in that interview. Um and again, I I I always recommend that an elected body have a written set of questions. So you ask the same candidates those the same questions to each candidate and that you make your own notes for one set for each candidate. Because I've found a lot of times after a long day, you've interviewed several people, you start scratching your head and say, what what did that guy say or what did that lady say? Um but make sure that that touches on some of the issues to you that are most important. If you have a strategic uh goal of something that I I have If you have a strategic, uh, goal of something that I, I haven't pulled out of the plan and, and, and tried to rate, and a lot of that stuff, by the way, is not. In the resumes, but if you want specific information on some of those things, make sure you ask a question about it. And if they give you a peculiar answer, ask them a follow-up question, you know, to get as much as you feel like you need to be comfortable with. So there, there's a lot of things, when I handle the process entirely, which we did not for your city. Um, then often I would ask the elected officials, you know, what are your top priorities? Um, you know, and what do you value most, but a lot of those things you can't get out of them, out of a resume. You know, that a lot of, a lot of elected officials will talk about integrity and that sort of thing. You can't just find in a resume that does somebody have integrity. You'll get a good idea of when you're in a background check and you look and see what they've done, and a detailed background check, uh, you probably want to talk to their past employers. Some of the city councils that they've worked for before, and uh, ask those very questions, so um. Uh, it's a complicated process, I just helped you on one thing, the evaluation of resumes. You've got a lot more work to do. But again, this is the most important decision you guys are making, it's extremely complex. So I wish you the best and um, and I will say that getting a good city manager will make a dramatic. It'll improve your ability to get your desires done as a council.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell, do you have any questions?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Okay, thank you.
Next, um, for instance, Marty. Um, next we're on to four D. Final investigative report, Greg Rossman Esquire.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, update, replacement of aeration tower, repair of aeration tower too.
Aeration, you come on, uh. Uh, the reason why this is on the agenda. Uh, Ms. Amanda, you're able to pull that up for me, that YouTube? Is that we're having a major uh, concern with keeping our water. Notice that the color and the odor of the water. And we went through some period of time when we couldn't straighten that out, so I wanted you to have an understanding. Why that was occurring, it was because of the aeration tower and uh, Mr. Sean is here. But if we just take a moment, we'll be quick. Uh, something, hopefully, let's hit that button. That's, that's an aeration tower right there, that's how it looks. Yeah, I know, I know, but it's still, it's giving us sample.
Okay.
So they can at least look, and uh, I don't know if you have the other one, but go ahead and explain.
All right, basically our aeration tower is star, they take the water from the well, we pump it to the aeration tower. It goes in through our pipes, comes in at the top about twenty-five feet up. And it rains down, as it rains down, we have media in there, um, we'll call them wiffle balls, that's what they look like. That wiffle ball agitates the water, drives it crazy and forces all the gases out of the water. Those gases ride to, to the top. The only way they can rise to the top is if we have a blower pushing an ambient air to move those balls. Where our problem is, is our blower has failed catastrophically. Uh, the impaler blew off, it broke the housing, so we've been down. We do have the parts for it, we do have them in, the fabrication is starting on Monday. So hopefully as of next week, we will have a Band-Aid on a cut that needs stitches. To be very blatant, um, blunt with you. We'll get this up and running, it'll get the water so it's not smelling anymore, the color, we're flushing crazily, opening up, letting all that water out. Color has started to come back, the smell is now diminished, it'll be completely gone, hopefully next Friday, knock on wood. And we have to start on the next tower because they're both down, they've been down for many, many years before I became here. So, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so the most important thing is that we do have a plan. And we are, we are repairing it and uh, hopefully by the end of, say, maybe six months, both of the towers. Will be operative.
Absolutely.
And that's the key. Any questions, please, Commissioner Bourne?
Yes, yes, I have a question, um, he, he just mentioned that the tower's been down for many, many years and I. This is my first time, uh, learning that the tower's been down for many, many years, so why haven't. Oh, unless they don't know if the rest of the commission know or not, but I don't know. So why are, are they down and why have they been down and? What is, what's the, what's the major importance of those towers being up? And do they create, uh, any issues as it relates to anything environmentally, health and safety?
Health and safety wise, no. It's just going to cause your water to have a foul odor to it, it is not bad for you, it will not hurt you. But it's off-pleasing, we all understand that. The towers being down for so long, I wish I could give you a better answer for that. All I know is, that's what I have found and we're working to make it better. I'm not gonna, I don't want to speculate on why it happened. But I will say, we're going to make it better, and that's all we can do is move forward with it.
The follow-up question to that is also, said that you're going to be doing something that's going to do a Band-Aid and you need stitches. So, help me understand, um, in terms of the number of downtime you have associated with putting Band-Aids on something. Uh, is it passes useful life? I mean, where are we with our equipment and in terms of operability?
Our equipment is old, it's outdated, it's broken down. Unfortunately, I know you don't want to hear that. We have fabrication that's being done, it's all custom work to get this up and running right away, so the people don't have to wait. The parts that we need no longer exist, these towers, these parts are gone, they're obsolete. So everything we do is a custom job, it's take this piece and make it work with this piece, so we can get it to run. The job to rebuild both of them is a quarter million dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total.
That's all?
That's all, that's all.
So, we've been fighting this for years, doing these custom whatevers. And we could have just spent two hundred some thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And therefore.
We, we need to make an emergency.
Exactly.
To, to make sure, we, we, we need to make a, we, I'm going to add it, I want to ask to add it. We need to make a, a, a motion, um, to, to, to get that taken care of, and we're going to find the money somewhere.
Yes.
I would appreciate that.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have any other things you wanted to say, the Commissioner?
I do, but yeah, no matter what say they, it's not going to be as important as getting this matter fixed.
Okay, and if I may, I just want you all to know that this has, this come to our attention. As we have begun working with uh, water treatment more extensively now. And so I do want you to know that as soon as it was understood at my level. We immediately started spending the funds to get the parts in, and now we're doing the plan. And that's why I brought it up, so that at least at your level, you would be aware that, hey, this is what's going on. I'm grateful that you are making this um, motion. Because that was to be my intent, but I wanted you to know about it at least.
But I think also, I would like, um, staff to work with Peter. To get some formal communication out to the citizens.
Yes.
As to why, I know this was a matter that was raving over social media. A couple of weeks ago and I brought it to the attention of the city manager. But I think in times like this, we need complete transparency.
Yes.
And having that we have now in-house, our public off, uh, public information officer, this is an opportunity for us just to. Put some kind of caution to let people know that, hey, it's not an issue, we're working towards it, it does not affect the quality. Of your water, just so that the citizens are aware of it, so I would like to see that in addition, happen, work with, um, Peter. To get some kind of publication out to the citizens.
Absolutely.
Thank you, we will do that.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for clarification. You mentioned. A patch is going in and should be in place by next week.
Yes, ma'am.
You also mentioned that it costs approximately two hundred and fifty K to rebuild them. I'm assuming that's totally refurbished or whatever that looks like.
Absolutely, that's from the bottom up, that's fixing everything, replacing everything with new parts on both towers, that's a total.
So, my question is. Do you understand the lifespan of the rebuilt towers? If so, I want to know what will be, if it has not already, be put in place to ensure continued. Regular maintenance and ideally to proactively, when you're submitting your budget. To address these things proactively.
Yes, ma'am. We have. I did not put it in the budget last year, we had other issues that I felt were more upfront that needed to be taken care of. Um, I did not expect it to go down, of course, it did, it was catastrophic. We now have implemented, since I took over this last year, a preventative maintenance plan.
Yep.
Much bigger than ever in the water department before, so now everything's getting checked constantly, every day, every other day. Just shouldn't happen again, the lifespan of these towers, once we rebuild them. With regular maintenance every day, once a month, everything that needs to be done, twenty to thirty years, no problem. And that's how, having to replace any parts on it, besides normal cleaning.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Commissioner Bourne?
And, and that's why we ask every, I mean, I know I've pushed to uh, make sure that. We ask the departments what's going well, what's not going well, how can we help you, um, serve the city better? And, and we have not been serving the city better by putting Band-Aids on it, when we, you, you're throwing good money to bad. In, in, in bad situations and, you know, we, 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 we don't have the tax dollars to kind of continue to push. Um, and that sunk cost that we're, we, we, we've been, um. Exercising over the past few years, so I'm not going to beat a, a dead horse, we need to make sure that we look at the life cycle of all of these things. Uh, and then, if you're constantly having breakdowns and maintenance. Understand and know the cost benefit analysis and, and making sure that we're, and weigh it out and, and, and provide the necessary feedback. To the um, management as well as the commission, we just want to make things right here.
Absolutely.
All right.
And I would like to just clarify one thing, um, the breakdown on it. Reason why we're putting a Band-Aid on it is because I don't want to have to make the citizens wait six months to get clean water again.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I mean, that, that's, that's not a problem, I, I, I appreciate you for doing that, but we also got to look at the, 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 the end goal. The long, long range, we can't continue to keep breaking, um, fixing things, because you could be using that time to be working on something else if we. Look at doing the, for the long, long range.
Understood.
Thing, is that's to make sure that we have our thing running efficiently, effectively, and reliably.
Absolutely, I completely understand.
And, and may I say, it's also important to note that, Mr. Sean, you just took over, how long ago? Months?
Months, months.
Yeah, not, you know, so under our new leadership and so forth. We are now digging into circumstances and trying to identify. Areas like this that we must put capital monies to, to do, as you have mentioned, Commissioner. And so going forward, it is our expectation to keep up with these repairs. And to con- continually, uh, increase our capital investment in these items, because we cannot afford to have two towers. Go down at the same time.
We, I understand.
And that is exactly what happened just now.
Understand, but we, we certainly want to get around to every department, we got to get around to every department and understand and know. What is happening in the city, the commission, we don't have that responsibility, our responsibility is set policy. So, and provide the necessary resources the city needs it to run, and, and we do our very best to do that. And so, we just want to make sure administrative heads and department heads, make sure you guys are doing what you need to do in these departments, because. Here again, we got some other things that's propping up, we had the lead, lead project, so we keep having things propping up, we need to.
And, and.
Do our business.
Yes, sir, I'm doing my best to find anything that we can address.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, and so, are you requesting a motion?
So, we, we cannot take action on updates and presentations, if you want to make a, an emergency motion during the, the commission segment of the agenda. That can be done, or you can properly notice it for the sake of public to have input on a regularly scheduled agenda item for the twenty-third.
Want to add it for emergency item.
Okay, well, we'll get to that, we'll get to that point in the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four D, final investigative report, Greg Rossman Esquire, Ms. Carty?
Uh, yes, uh, following the, um, guidance of the commissioners, uh, I was, um. Directed to continue the investigation on both individuals and, uh. This is the investigation, um, that Mr. Greg Rossman completed. And we did submit the final report as also requested. Mr. Rossman is here tonight to expound on the final report that he did issue.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Greg Rossman and I am an attorney. About five hours south of here and ten degrees warmer than Palatka. Um, but I was a prosecutor for twenty years, from nineteen ninety-four to twenty fourteen in Broward County. And for the last ten years, I work as a legal advisor to police departments and cities and doing investigations such as this. But primarily working with police departments with procedure, internal affairs investigations, search warrants, things like that. Um, but I was contracted back in, I want to say the end of July. To begin, and I have submitted three documents to you, one was an interim report, which was submitted September of this, of twenty-four. I was asked by Ms. Carty to prepare a summary of that report, which is a two-page document. And that document is dated September nineteenth. And then a final report dated November twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-four, and um. Maybe I'm being presumptuous, but I'm presuming that you all have received and reviewed those reports. So Ms. Carty said that it was your pleasure, you wanted me to come up and discuss possibly in person the reports, so here I am.
So, Mayor, I'll be the first one to break this ice. Um, I must admit that I'm a tad bit, um, concerned at the quality. Of the investigation. Um, information that was presented to us, I don't see any additional information. Um, really from information that I provided to Mr. Bell at that time. Um, also in going through the investigation of the report. Um, were there any contact made with individuals from organizations that you mentioned? Or was everything that you received just solely with you looking up online and all of that kind of stuff? So, I don't see any back and forth of email communications that may have happened with people that are involved, I don't see any communications. At all, so that's one of my overall questions.
Sure, so there were, I didn't, uh, speak to individuals. Individuals that, and pursuant to one twelve, um, the Commission of Ethics guidelines, that asked not to have their names identified, so that's why they're not identified. I do reference in the report, having spoken to multiple individuals. Some were present and former, uh, employees. There were individuals that I reached out to that chose not to speak to me. The first one being, um, the, the, what you might say is the subject of the, of the, this investigation, Sir Griffith. Um, he was reached out to first, I'm used to speaking to that person first, to give them the opportunity, they want to speak to me first before I learn anything else. Or I gather all my facts, present it to them, and let them address those facts before I give you a report. Gave that option, well, the email and through cell, and I received no response to that.
With regards to excluding Mr. Griffith. Um. In the, the, the categories in which we've asked you to, um, investigate. I'm not sure exactly, and again, you said that you have, they have the ability not to come forth with regards to having their name publicized. But I've spoken to several people, said that there were no communications with their different organizations, which again is perplexed. Uh, me, because how can we have a thorough investigation if individuals who hold. High ranks within those organizations, they're not, or they have not, they have not been contacted. Um, so again, that's why I'm one of the ones who made the request that you be present, so that we can ask you the pressing questions and not put our staff. In situations or being able to answer questions that they may not necessarily have the answer to, so again. I was the one who made that overall request, and I thank you for availing yourself, but I'll. And I'll listen to the rest of the commission before I make any other.
Well, I'd like to address what, what you said, there's, there's two ways that that was addressed.
Absolutely.
One is, as a consultant, I, at the time, it was the city manager, Mr. Bell, was, that reached out to me, pursuant to, uh, orders from the commission. Mr. Bell gives me, at that point, my marching orders. I discussed with him how I'm going to do, how I'd like to do the investigation, but I have no subpoena powers. So I cannot speak to anybody who does not want to speak to me. Mr. Bell and the documents themselves lead me towards people that may have information. I reached out to people and some spoke to me, some did not, that, that's, there's, there's nothing I can do about that. I will say, it didn't affect, I did not believe it affected my ability, with possibly the exception of the third, what we call the airport. Property, because there, there, and, and I think in fairness, my, I think I used the word exoneration, found there was no. no conflict there because there was no connection. There were people that gave information that they thought would show there was a conflict. I couldn't verify that. So if I can't verify that myself through documentations or other kind of evidence, I'm not going to draw a conclusion from it. So you'll see in my first report, the exhibits, I think the report is eleven pages, exhibits are some twenty-something pages. Every single conclusion I make is, has a footnote next to it and a document that leads you to how I came to that conclusion. I'm hired to gather facts in a method that maybe you find not worthy, and that's that's solely up to you. But I'm hired for my expertise to gather facts, whatever way that I can, again, without subpoena powers, and try to make a decision based on the facts that I gather. One, can I make a decision as to what I believe those credible facts are? I did that in all three instances. Secondly, what rubric do we look at? Is it policy? Is it the Commission on, like, Florida Statute one twelve? Is there a Florida statute, a thirty-eight violation, potentially? So I was asked to look at policy, procedure, and statute. I did all of those things. And where I could draw conclusions, I did. That's my job. You don't have to accept or agree with my conclusions.
Absolutely, I know.
Anybody else have any questions of Mr. Rosman? I I had the same concerns as Commissioner Campbell as to how you conducted this investigation and who you investigated. I mean, all of this was based on an anonymous complaint. And it is hard to investigate an anonymous complaint without talking to the person or persons that made the complaint. I was an investigator for allegations of abuse and neglect for people with disabilities in Connecticut for many years, and that was kind of the starting point. If somebody wanted to make an anonymous complaint, we couldn't really act on it unless they were willing to step forward. So I I understand that that's a challenge. But I I wasn't clear that there were some parties referenced in this report, and I wasn't sure that they were interviewed or at any point in time.
Well, I was, I'm also at a tremendous disadvantage because Mr. I was told that Mr. Bell and then in his stead, Ms. Carty, people, everybody here, staff or anybody, were notified that I was hired and that I was here and that I wanted to speak to anybody who wanted to speak to me. I can't kind of be a soothsayer and say, who out there would be those appropriate people? Those people that I could discern, I reached out to. And as I said, some of them spoke to me, some of them did not. But anybody who wanted to speak to me, I've been available since July, and I'm led to believe, and I'm not here, but I was led to believe that that was public knowledge. And there are public emails between the original city mayor and myself that have my email address and the staff members from here that I did not know did reach out to me on both my cellphone and my work phone and emails. So anybody that wanted to speak to me, somebody that feels like they didn't get an opportunity to speak to me, I'd speak to them now. I mean, it's I think it's cost you money. I mean, when I did the interim report, my suggestion at that time was to refer to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and or the Seventh Circuit State Attorney's Office, which costs you nothing. And you authorized that, and I in fact did that.
Right. And I I wasn't necessarily referencing interviewing anybody that was in the city and city employee or with the city. I was talking about other entities that were mentioned in this report.
Well, I'm gonna be straightforward. Did you make contact with regards to the land swap with anyone from the Douglas Law Firm, including Mr. Charlie or a representative of his organization?
No, sir. He he was not under investigation. I can draw no conclusion as to him.
Not under investigation, but the investigation included a transaction that could have possibly had the person in question at that time. So you've answered my question. Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I, there are some public comment cards, so I'm going to go to that now and open the floor up.
May I ask the attorney something?
You sure, ma'am.
I know that it's been listed, but the part, the way that it's been listed, it's under city manager or administrative reports. Is it is it proper for the public? Because I know that we called for Mr. Mr. Roseman to be here, Mr. Ross, Mr. Roseman to be here, Rossman to be here. But I just want to make sure as we proceed forward, that we're proceeding forward in a proper manner and not out of.
Right. So, no, there are not public comments on presentation, city manager, administrative reports or updates. You do have that section on the agenda, which immediately follows public comment. And those members of the public that want to speak to this issue certainly could at that point. But it the matter would have had to have been on your regular agenda for public comment to be taken on that item.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of questions. So, Mr. Rosman.
Yes, sir.
You were charged with gathering facts, as you stated. So are you, were you here today to tell us what your conclusions were?
That is not how I took it, but I'm I'm happy discussing. The reports have conclusions within them. Definitive conclusions as to the interim report, which dealt with one transaction. The final report looked at this two two remaining transactions. So in one of them, I found, I made a finding that I believe there was a conflict of interest and that that was not disclosed. I believe I made the finding the same. And the third one, I could not find. And in fact, they use the term that we would use, exonerated, that there was no, there's no finding of a conflict of interest or anything else in reference to the third property, the airport property.
Okay. So you were directed to forward your findings to State Attorney's Office, Seventh District?
So I spoke to somebody, the State Attorney, the Seventh Circuit State Attorney's Office, who preferred that since, when I, my suggestion to you was either the State Attorney's Office of the Seventh Circuit or the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. And you authorized me to reach out to both, so I did that. So I spoke to somebody at the at the Seventh Circuit first. That person preferred that I get to FDLE and then get back to him after I spoke to FDLE. So I did that. Spoke to a supervisor at FDLE. That person decide, wanted me to speak to the Seventh Circuit and tell them that it was going to be with FDLE. And I spoke to, again, two people at the Florida Department of Law Enforcement as recently as three thirty this afternoon. So the only thing I'm authorized to say about that is they don't they don't publicly acknowledge an investigation. And they don't want me to say anything further beyond that.
They don't want, say, repeat that again?
They don't publicly acknowledge whether or not they are openly investigating something.
Okay.
That's all I'm authorized to say from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement.
And my final, my final question to you as an attorney, excuse me, as you are an attorney and investigator. You are an attorney, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thirty years.
We've mentioned about, and I think it's, it was a, as I was looking at the minutes of the last meeting when we addressed this, this entire board agreed to have this report to go up to the Commission on Ethics, okay? But in the minutes, it does say Commissioner Jones. I bought it up, but the entire board agreed. So I want that corrected in the minutes. After looking at that. So in your experience, something like this, if it's dealing with ethics, it was the anonymous complaint was the issue seems as it was here, going up to the Commission of Ethics. And it's who's to send it there? If it's a ethical violation that's alleged, because we didn't say it happened, we, that's why you were hired. If it's alleged, who was to send that up?
If if you read Florida Statute one twelve, I think it's subsection three one three, anybody can can file the complaint with the Commission on Ethics. It does, their form does want that form sworn to. That person doesn't have to be this specific investigator. It has to be somebody who has knowledge that can swear they have knowledge that less than, but round, I would, I prefer the term probable cause. And what I would tell you is the report that I've given you in two of the three instances develops, anybody that reads that report develops probable cause upon information and belief. It's not the investigator that does that. I don't work for the city of Placa. So my job is to hire and give you facts upon which you can draw conclusions if you choose. You may not all agree on them. But anybody who reads that and believes that based on the conclusions that I have made and the facts supporting those conclusions, that there is probable cause to believe that, anybody can file that and and should properly file that with the Commission of Ethics.
So even if you don't have firsthand knowledge, which none of us do, it's an, again, anonymous allegation. We can report that to the Commission on Ethics without firsthand knowledge. I thought one had to have firsthand knowledge.
Mayor, I will tell you this. In the last seven and a half years, I was a homicide prosecutor, sixty-five homicide trials. We prosecuted homicides on circumstantial evidence, three or four of them, with no eyewitnesses.
I understand, that's homicide.
You have to gather facts, and you gather those facts, and you try to make an intelligent decision to say, do these facts lead me to a conclusion based on specifically rubrics, reasonable suspicion, probable cause, we're talking about in the law enforcement area, things like this. And that's why I try to use the term probable cause, because it's what I'm used to, it's what I'm from. I think it's the fairest way to do things. Probable cause doesn't mean anybody's guilty of anything. It means that there's further investigation warrant. That's all it means. So my, I was asked to draw my opinions. I did so. I believe so fairly. I'm used to, I've I've done a lot of these. I'm used to, nobody's ever had. Whether it's the person being investigated, not being investigated, or a commission of five or seven, there's always some that agree, some that disagree. I don't take offense to that. I'm a big boy. But I was asked to do very specific things. I did them. I believed that that's my ability, and I believe in a very honest and straightforward fashion. I did draw conclusions to Commissioner Jones's question, and I think those conclusions warrant somebody drawing their own conclusions as to whether or not ethics violations occur. But I made that that specific, I did make those findings in two of the three instances.
Commissioner.
I do have a couple of questions, and this may be to the investigator and or the city attorney. As I'm listening to this, I want to I want to take a deeper dive and make sure I'm understanding that what we're discussing. I don't want to say is is adding value or that we are having the right discussion in this forum. So I'm looking for guidance. So I hear a few things. Number one, there were, from what I read, three transactions, well, two city transactions, and then another transaction, a private transaction. Based on your recommendation, you said there was some conflict of interest in one, which was the River City, um, some River Center transaction.
Actually, two, what I called the Creel Avenue.
Okay, I want to hold off on Creel Avenue because that's not a swap with the city. So that's why I'm doing that separately, but just
I understand.
Hear me out. So potential conflict of interest from your conclusion, but not for the airport. And Creel Avenue, I want to hold separately because I have a different question for that. We asked for an investigation. The investigation has occurred. You have provided your final report.
Yes, ma'am.
We are clarifying your process to get to the final report. You're clarifying some things here for us. My question, and that's why I said this may partially be for our city attorney, is there are transactions that have been completed. And when I look at the process that occurred to complete those transactions, there were several points of approval from various departments. The transactions are complete. And so I think what I'm trying to understand is, are we able to separate the transactions because they are complete? Nothing's going to change with those completed transactions. Is that a correct statement?
As to the River Center land swap and the airport land swap, that is correct. That is not the case with Kelly Smith Road, what the
That's why I want to hold that one separately. So to that point, and that's what I want to, on record, to understand. We are here focusing on an investigation. We have a recommendation. The investigator has referred this case to FDLE. We will not know from their practice whether or not they will open an investigation. So is it reasonable to assume that unless you're further engaged, that this is complete? From your perspective, is that a statement? Unless we do another engagement, is that a true statement?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The next thing I want to talk about is for the, I'm calling it Creel Avenue, if if are we good with that reference?
It's technically Kelly Smith Road.
Kelly Smith Road. In terms of the Kelly Smith Road activity, again, when I looked at the full report and the events in sequential date order, there were several levels of approvals through that entire process, going back a couple of years. I want to make sure, am I correct in my understanding? And this is for our city attorney. Okay. In the case of that, I just want to make a couple of statements that may be clear, but I want to state them. I don't want to assume anything. Because the subject to which we're referencing in this investigation is no longer an employee of this city. I think we can agree on that. Is that correct? City attorney. The subject is also no longer affiliated with the Kelly Smith
That is correct.
Project. I do know that the city, in a previous meeting, directed the city attorney, or if I get that correct, or the city manager, to refer this to the Commission on Ethics. Okay, and that's the conversation we're having now as to how it gets submitted based on firsthand information and and all of the, some of the questions that have just been asked. I'm taking my time to go through this because I clearly want to separate things. Sometimes when we talk about things as a whole, we need to understand the facts, and we need to understand the impact benefit or detriment to our city and what is ultimately what ultimately cannot be undone. Hence, my point about River Center. Yes, I think the conclusion said there's possibly a conflict of interest. The recommendation is to refer, refer. I just want to make sure I'm stating some facts, hopefully for clarity and to hopefully provide us conversation or discussion on how we potentially may move forward in the best interest of the city. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, may I add something to that about the, what what they're calling the Kelly Smith Road? I was given that term from the beginning, the Creel. I did not make that up. So that's where I came from. So I understand what you're saying very clearly about it being a private transaction. The concern, as it was brought to me, and the facts that I developed were, when you talked about the levels of approval, inherently, there's the problem. If you think of it like you're, I hate to say baking a cake, but you're grabbing ingredients. If one of the ingredients is bad, you may still bake a cake, but it's not what you were trying to do. So if at the time, somebody who had was either an assistant city manager or the interim city manager, could be the person overseeing those approvals and swaying how they go or how they're going, not to say they are, I don't work here. That's what I was asked to investigate. So that's why the conflict of interest in that one was so concerning from an investigator standpoint. I don't make the findings you do. But that's why I finished the interim report as I did in September, because Mr. Bell wanted something for, I guess, some commissioners had asked for some kind of report at that point in time. So I said I'm only up to the one at that time. But that's why, though there are those levels of approval, if those level of approvals were improperly given, improperly given, and possibly from a conflict standpoint, I I'm not, I don't do city attorney work, I defer to your city attorney, but Statute one twelve does say that they're voidable. That contracts are voidable. Now, that's not for me to say or to to guide you on, but you can see that in the statute for yourself. Whether they apply, whether there are instances that make it voidable for you, I cannot say. And that's for you to determine with advice from your city attorney. But Statute one twelve does have that in there. So that if, let's use the state instead of Placa, if a state employee rigged a bid of such, and the state got a bad deal on it, if that state employee was found to have done so or had that conflict, it is a voidable contract, and that goes for all municipalities.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any further questions?
So we, this might come as a surprise, but sometimes lawyers disagree with each other. At the last city commission meeting, the commissioners did direct the city manager and myself to move forward with filing a complaint with the Commission on Ethics based upon the investigative report conducted by Mr. Rosman. As you know, I drafted a memorandum dated January second, following my review of the Commission on Ethics rules, the Florida statutes, and then also I followed up with contacting general counsel for the Commission on Ethics. I learned that in this past legislative session, twenty twenty-four, the legislature passed a law that required anyone filing a complaint with the Commission on Ethics The legislature passed a law that required anyone filing a complaint with the Commission on Ethics. To do so in, with personal knowledge and they must do so under oath. He further advised me, this would be the general counsel to the Commission on Ethics. Um, his name is Gray Schaefer. He cautioned about filing a complaint since it would be in either Ms. Cardy or my personal capacity. So the only agencies that are allowed to actually refer a complaint to the Commission on Ethics. Are the Office of the Governor, Florida Department of Law Enforcement, the State Attorney's Office, or the U.S. Attorney's Office. Anyone else has to do it in their personal capacity and also be subject to personal liability. Should the complaint found to be frivolous, they would be on the hook for the attorney's fees and costs. Um, that were incurred by the, the person that was under investigation. So you are asking your employees in their personal capacity to file a complaint with the Commission on Ethics. Based upon something that we actually have no personal knowledge of. Um, unlike what Mr. Rossman said, um, I do not have personal knowledge. I am not comfortable under penalty of perjury. Moving forward, signing an oath saying that I do, simply, um, based upon his investigative report. I have put the exact verbiage of this new law that requires personal knowledge, um, in this memo. And it was codified by the Commission on Ethics in their new form for complaints. And you can also find it in section 112.3177 Florida statutes, as well as the Florida Administrative Code. So the issue is, um, you provided this direction for us to file this complaint with the Commission on Ethics. And yet the city as an agency cannot. So that complaint, uh, would need to be filed by an individual. Uh, Mr. Rossman has apparently personal knowledge. You can direct him to file a complaint. Um, but it is my advice that your employees here not file a complaint with the Commission on Ethics. Because it would be in their personal capacity and subject them to personal liability.
Actually, I agree with everything, the legal, the legal part, I, I agree. And that's really not new, the, the, the law that they're, she's talking about codifying. I've done these for years. That, I don't disagree with that, but the personal knowledge issue is, does it, does it mean you're the personal investigator? I mean, a police officer who's a homicide investigator, talks to witnesses, shows photo lineups, doesn't have personal knowledge. He wasn't there when the person was shot and killed, but he files an affidavit saying this person shot and killed that human being. Based on the knowledge he gathered from an investigation and shared with a grand jury, and the grand jury does the indictment. So what I'm saying is, anybody in response to Commissioner Jones' question, somebody can file. His question was, can somebody file it? Yes, they can, based on if they read the report and they believe the report to be accurate and true. That's what they're certifying to the Commission on Ethics. They're going to say, here's this report. I have received it. I have reviewed it. And I believe based on what I read, it is accurate and true. And that's what they're certifying.
Be personally liable for whoever that individual is, whether it's one of us, um, city attorney, city manager. If we file that and it was, uh, turned out to be a frivolous, after further investigation to be a frivolous charge, then we are liable. Uh, whoever we are in that individual case. Go ahead, Commissioner.
But if, if it was filed on behalf of, and you say you can't file it on behalf of a city, so you're saying that then that would now go to. An individual, whoever filed it, it will be upon them. That's what I'm understanding here.
That, that's, that is, I, I'm going to defer to your, your city attorney's advice because she advised you directly and I'm a consultant. And I was not hired as an attorney to give legal advice, but I would say, yes, I don't disagree. When she said we disagree, I don't disagree with what she just told you. The disagreement is whether or not it's the only the person who did the investigation that can do that. It's anybody that has knowledge based on what they, however they obtained that knowledge.
Right. And so what, what you provided would be the knowledge that could be filed upon.
If somebody read it and believed it to be accurate and correct, yes. And if there's a commissioner that did not believe so, they would not want to act on that. I will also echo something that Ms. West said. The Florida Department of Law Enforcement also can do that. I don't believe municipality is prevented from doing so because I have worked on these where they have. In the past, but I'm going to, I'm not here for that, but, um, definitely the FD, FDLE can and FDLE does. This has been referred to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. They are aware of it. My reports have been shared with them. They have the same three documents that you have.
And you, you did it with the FDLE and then you said this, the, the, um. Code, I mean, Commission on Ethics is the other piece that we're addressing now, which we.
Yes, sir, but I'm saying those things are not mutually exclusive. The Florida Department of Law Enforcement can also, on their own, they can, they're. If they were, if, can't say they're investigating, but let's say hypothetically, they investigate and they find there is a crime. They will refer that to the State Attorney's Office and ultimately the State Attorney's Office decides whether or not they're going to charge a crime. FD does not have the authority. If they determine there is not one, but they believe there is a conflict of interest, they can then turn and give this to the Commission on Ethics. And say, we believe there's an ethical violation. It doesn't rise to a level the state attorney wants to charge a crime, but we think Commission on Ethics should look at it and they can, they can do that as well.
Commissioner Campbell.
So in the capacity that we sit in today, tonight, how do we move past this?
That's a great question. And that is what, um, I was seeking a little bit of guidance on when I provided this, um, memo on January 2nd. Because there are only four agencies within the state of Florida that can refer a matter to the Commission on Ethics. And FDLE is one of those agencies. My recommendation is that if FDLE in their, um. Capacity of investigating this matter finds that there is a basis for referring this matter to the Commission on Ethics. Then so be it and let them handle that since it is an agency that is permissible in terms of referring capacity.
So essentially we can. Conclude that it's in the hands of the people that it need, the departments that it needs to be in. And we just need to be back, sit back and be patient to see if there is.
That's our last. Whoever has knowledge, which was provided, provided the report. And that's, and that's what he's also saying. So all of those things on the table.
So, uh, Mr.
Rossman.
Rossman.
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Rossman, uh, just like we were mentioning about law enforcement and, uh, things going to the State Attorney's Office or FDLE. In order to move a report forward to any of those agencies, you have to swear and attest that what you're submitting. Is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge.
To, to make a complaint with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement?
If you're filing a complaint, um, I'm, I'm saying even law enforcement, law enforcement sent a, sent a complaint affidavit to the State Attorney's Office.
They swear to it.
They swear to it.
Yes, sir.
And that's facts to the best of their knowledge.
To the best of their knowledge, yes. It doesn't mean their facts.
So with this report, are you doing the same?
I'm not. I'm, I'm not asked in a, I'm not here in a capacity where anybody's asking me to swear.
I'm, I'm asking you, you submitting that report. And so.
I stand by my report.
Yeah, so.
Yes, sir. Every word in it, including where I did not find a conflict. I mean, people want to look and the people are one side or the other. I go where the evidence leads me to go. I don't know the person. Uh, the reason I think I was chosen is because I'm five hours away. I don't have a dog in the fight. I don't have relatives here. I don't have cousins here. I don't know anybody here. So I have nothing to gain. And in fact, I try, I want to say try, but I recommended that this conclude back in September. At about half of what you spent on it and you asked me to continue going forward. If you look at the, the, the hearing, I appeared by Zoom and said, that's when I said, send it to FDLE. And or the State Attorney's Office, whichever one agrees, if they agree at all, to take it and then spend no more taxpayer money. And, and that, you, and, but I worked for you at the time and I was given direction in an email from Ms. Cardy to proceed. So I did, but I stand by everything in the report. Yes, sir.
So I, I think that's, goes back to what Campbell said. We, we really just got the same information. Um, those next three months, but I'm, I'm okay with what you said and what the attorney said. But I do know that in the investigation, once you complete that investigation, you are testing that. You are presenting facts to us and you didn't just, you didn't just go and say, hey, this is what I believe happened. It's almost like Dragnet, you know, that, that show back in the day, Just the Facts, and that's what we wanted you.
I'm old enough to remember that. Yes, sir. The movie, the black and white, the original version.
So if, if you were doing that, you know, I, I just wanted to make sure that you go and reckon saying that, that's all.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I'm always well aware. I don't make the final decision. I just present to you what I'm asked to present. And that's, that's all I can do.
Um, and we can now thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rossman, we're going to now move on. We're going to move on to public comments. I have several cards here. I'm going to open the Florida Public Comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes, be respectful and polite. And give the city, um, or town that you reside in, Jennifer Moats.
Good evening. I am Jennifer Moats. I'm here in Palatka. Um, I am the publisher of the Palatka Daily News. And we have been a part of this community for, or since 1885. But I come here tonight as a, not as a journalist or a news reporter. I've come here tonight as the person who's put in charge of an exceptional group of people and as a member of this community. The employees who work at the PDN are dedicated and hardworking. And many of them have lived here their entire lives and they love this community. Some employees have worked for the PDN most of their adult lives. And more than one has actually worked there more than 50 years. It's a place that we all, we call our second home and we are a family. My top priority for the employees is their safety and security. So I am angry and I'm sad and I'm dismayed by what happened on Christmas night and at least one other time. Since I've mid, I moved here two and a half years ago. And I can no longer be silent. On Christmas night, a horrific incident took place in the parking lot of the PDN. Which is a privately owned business and property that was closed, not open. Tragically, as a result, lives were lost. Prior to that, a large gathering occurred near or around our building on St. John's Avenue, which ended in the shooting. The aftermath of that left our parking lot riddled with trash, empty liquor bottles, empty food containers, broken glass. And at least 70 shell casings. A bullet went through the window into our building at a location. And a time that just six months ago would have seen employees working. The human toll of the violence that occurred is immeasurable, but there are other consequences as well. The emotional and financial tolls are long lasting and far reaching. Our employees who have traditionally worked at night are now afraid to come to the building to work after dark. Our employees no longer feel safe. They no longer feel safe when the fire department must wash blood from the doorway, the entrance, the stairs, the side of the building. And they still couldn't get it off. We then had to use bleach and a power washer or pressure washer to remove the rest. They no longer feel safe when working in a building that became a place of a shootout on the main street in Palatka. And they no longer feel safe when our delivery van has a bullet hole in it. Our delivery van sustained $1,200 in damage and the window replacement is over $600. On the day after the event, we were forced to close our building and because of that, because it remained a crime scene. And we lost business that day. Creating a safe environment must be top priority for all. Everything else pales in comparison and nothing else can be accomplished without it. We want to work together for solutions. It's past time to take action to make our community a safe place to live, work and play. Without safety, we have nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne McLean.
Yeah, Wayne McLean, Palatka, Florida, also an employee at Beck Automotive Sales and Beck Automotive Group. So as a member, as a community member in a business community, I want to take this opportunity to express my full support. For the city commission's ongoing efforts to improve public safety, particularly in supporting our law enforcement officers. The work our police officers do every day is essential to ensuring that our streets are safe. And our businesses can continue to operate in an environment where both employees and customers feel secure. I believe we must recognize and so does my company and support the vital role that police officers play in keeping our cities safe. The challenges they face are immense. I am grateful for their dedication and commitment to protecting our community. By increasing resources for law enforcement and improving training and fostering strong relationships. Between officers, business owners and residents, we can work together to ensure a safer and more resilient city. I understand how crucial it is for our local police to have the support and resources they need to respond effectively. To crime and public safety issues. I stand with the men and women of our police force and offer my full support along with my companies to the city commission. To provide them with the tools, funding and community backing necessary to succeed their, their mission. Thank you for your continued focus on public safety and for your support of our law enforcement officers. Please let us know as business owners and community leaders what we can do to foster a safe community. I agree with several of the commissioners when they expressed last week that public safety has to be the number one priority of government. I look forward to the positive changes these efforts will bring to our community and local businesses. In closing, I thank each and every one of you for your commitment to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Tavara's, Tavara's Clark.
How you doing, Bill?
Good. How are you, Mr. Clark?
Guess what?
Can you give us your name and?
Lawrence Clark.
And your city of residence, just for the record.
Commissioner Camp, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Bourne, Commissioner Davis. I'm a free man. Everything that was done by the city, it's on the city behalf. You could get guidance from your city manager, Ms. Carter. I did not do nothing wrong. Y'all gave my business ownership. Y'all illegally transferred ownership of my business. It took me and Ms. Carter 15 minutes to get to the bottom of it. We called Florida Sun bid. June 26th, the day y'all transferred the ownership of my business, I still own that business. The city still allowed that business to run in my name. There's no such thing as Gold Rush One. Never was a Gold Rush One, but that business was still running under my name. As I come here and I express myself time after time after time again. I ain't got no problem with the city. You say you want to build the city, make the city better. We can't do it like this, man. I don't hold no grudge with you. Well, if somebody wrong, you wrong. I'm off for five years in prison. For being a victim fraud that was committed by the city. I ain't done nothing wrong. Ain't nobody tried to straighten this problem out. I don't roll everybody. Told them this business was illegal. I signed paperwork showing why I still own this business. All of it was ignored. I ain't done nothing wrong, but you treat me like a criminal. And I'm the victim of fraud that's committed by the city. Ms. Carter will tell you, and once she. I would like to be put on this, um, emergency item for, on the city agenda for this because I ain't. I ain't done nothing wrong about this. And then I ask for a public record request. On your Kelly Smith Road. Your parcel was in the front. You got four water heads in the back of the parcel. I ask for a public request to see what a permit is, to see how that's done. I ain't got them yet. So we can sit down now and get the situation straight. She can tell you, you have me illegally arrested for what the city did.
Vicky Duke.
Vicky Duke, Palatka, Florida. I came before y'all months ago when we were. Um, you were finishing the repaving of St. John's Avenue in the downtown section. And Mr. Bell was here then and I brought up the fact that the brick intersections. In the beautiful downtown that had been put in had been. Scarred by all the black tar and substance that went across those intersections. And, um, Mr. B- And Mr. Bell made the comment that it would be on the punch list of things that they had to clean up, that it would be part of their payment. Well, that is still there. That is not cleaned up. And as we work towards the downtown city script, city landscaping that we're trying to do, we're going to put in something nice and then we're going to just let it get torn up. Why even invest the money in it? You know, let's look at that. And the other thing, if you'll walk around those intersections, there is information that is sprayed in spray paint on the bricks. Numbers, dash lines, I don't know whether it's been done by the city, by whoever was doing piping, whoever was doing power, whoever was, I don't know who painted those numbers on there. But there's a reason for them. They're at every intersection. Some kind of guidelines need to be set up that that is protected. You don't, whatever you use on that needs to be where it can be removed. Where it's on the blacktop, you can do a patchwork over stuff that gets sprayed on it, but that brick, and I guess proper paint stripping that wouldn't affect the Saint John's River could be used in that accord. But someone needs to look at that. And if we don't have some kind of rules in place already, that, that those things that as we are moving forward, making that look pretty, why make it pretty and then tear it up six months later? Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Schabell.
Good evening, Kevin Schabell. My address is one one seven North Second Street, Palatka, Florida, three two one seven seven. I'm presenting this as part one. I'm here to speak about the November report of Mr. Rossman. On behalf of Mr. Douglas, I publicly request Mr. Rossman retract any implication of impropriety by Mr. Douglas regarding the River Center land swap and apologize for the reputational harm that he has already caused. His report is factually deficient, wrong in its conclusions, and defamatory. I ask this commission to completely reject the report and the basis for the request is as follows. One, there was no failure to disclose potential conflicts of interest. Two, there was no actual conflict of interest. And three, the commissioners were fully aware of the ongoing investigation into Griffith when they made the decision regarding the River Center. Rossman claims that the findings and conclusions are based on an exhaustive review of documents and meeting videos. Yet there is no mention or record of who Rossman spoke to or interviewed. Did Rossman contact former owner of Port Consolidated, Mike Simmons? No, he did not. Did Rossman contact the independent appraiser of the properties? No, he did not. Did Rossman contact Montrose, the environmental company working on the Port Consolidated property? No, he did not. Did Rossman interview any current or former employees? No response to our public records request would indicate that he did. Did Rossman undertake any effort to identify the anonymous complainant that launched this entire course of action? Who knows? I can represent with certainty that Mr. Douglas would have happily provided a statement and factual knowledge prior to the public release of Rossman's report. But he was never afforded the opportunity. How many others could have provided relevant information but were never asked? For an investigation into issues of transparency, the public has a right to know the sources that led Rossman to leap from an inaccurate letterhead all the way to a knowing intent to deceive on the part of Mr. Griffith and impugning Mr. Douglas in the process. The event triggering this investigation was the delivery of an anonymous complaint sent to city commissioners in June of twenty twenty-four, alleging unethical behavior by Griffith and specifically pointing to the partnership of Griffith and Douglas in next door real estate. The commissioners and the new city manager, Mr. Bell, were clearly noticed of the business relationship at that time. Mr. Bell himself was told by Mr. Douglas of his common real estate holdings with Griffith on Bell's first day on the job. While some municipalities and counties have specific policies and procedures to deal with anonymous complaints, which present their own issues of conflict and potential abuse. In response to the anonymous complaint here on July seventeenth, Bell requested all city staff to submit a conflict of interest statement. But even prior to Bell's emailed request, Griffith provided his statement on July first, twenty twenty-four. Rossman reports that, quote, "Mr. Griffith had an affirmative duty to disclose to the city this business relationship." Mr. Douglas Junior had at minima a good faith obligation to reveal the relationship in his dealings with the city. Mr. Griffith remained on as an assistant city attorney after Mr. King's high. A city manager. Incredibly, Rossman then states Griffith never disclosed this business relationship to Mr. Bell. The facts are otherwise.
Lisa Miles.
Lisa Miles, one one seven North Second Street, Palatka, Florida, three two one seven seven. I'm going to be speaking on part two. Given the various business interests of previous managers and administrators, one might assume there is a procedure in process for reporting and some repository of statements maintained by the city. Alas, the City of Palatka Personnel Rules and Regulations cited by Rossman as city policies and procedures, contains no such procedure. A public records request for any and all written conflict of interest statements submitted by the city personnel pursuant to city policy requirements from two thousand ten to present resulted in five documents in response to Bell's June twenty twenty-four request. For the past fifteen years, no pre-existing example of written conflict of interest statements submitted by city personnel was found or provided from twenty ten to present. It's highly likely that no written conflict of interest statements exist from prior to twenty ten. In the future, a developed procedure such as that used by City of Jacksonville may prove helpful. Alternative suggestions include, number one, a sign-off on each draft agenda for office holders and employees to identify any relationships of potential conflict of interest. Number two, a specific tab on the city website with every financial disclosure form and potential conflict of interest statements posted. And number three, a bulletin board for the foyer at City Hall so that all office holders and employees can have their potential conflicts of interest on public display. If not City Hall, where might statements of financial interest and potential conflicts be stored? Commissioners are familiar with the Form One that is required by the state of Florida for state and municipal office holders and employees. The Florida Commission on Ethics maintains an online data set of filings. Griffith's two thousand twenty-three filing dated July first of two thousand twenty-four is available online and lists all of his financial interests. Prior to two thousand twenty-four, the filing instructions directed employees to file their Form One with the local supervisor of elections. A simple request to the Putnam County Supervisor of Elections was all it took to obtain a copy of Griffith's two thousand twenty-two filing dated June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. His interest in next door real estate is clearly listed. Likewise, Griffith's two thousand twenty-one filing dated August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two clearly lists his interests in next door real estate. The existence of these Form One documents are significant exculpatory evidence that should at least be discovered and mentioned in a report that concludes there was a lack of candor and an intention to conceal the very relationship indicated in the public records and filings. Lives and livelihoods are at stake. Did Griffith openly identify his business interests in the public records of SunBiz? Yes, he did.
Thank you.
There was no failure to disclose.
Thank you. Garrett Lee.
Can we act as I'd be my full and respectful of the time that you gave me?
Three minutes.
Garrett Lee, the address is one one seven North Second Street, Palatka, Florida, three two one seven seven. This is part three of the response to the Rossman report. In his report, Rossman acknowledges that Blue Crab North is a single-member limited liability company. Charles Douglas is the founding and sole member of the company. Rossman then implies wrongdoing by raising questions which he does not investigate for answers. What of the two thousand and twenty-three sale for forty-five thousand dollars? A simple call to the purchaser, Mike Simmons, reveals that the payment was a final payment on a lease with an option to buy. Contacting former Mayor Terrell Hill might reveal that discussions regarding the property in two thousand twenty-two were in the neighborhood of one point one, one point two million. To move from a presumption to an understanding of the advanced cleanup agreement, Rossman could have reviewed the information presented to this commission, the extensive due diligence documentation provided, or call Mr. Lee Ford, the main contact for Mount Rose Environmental. Rossman also implies improper behavior then concludes that by its plain terms, the land swap doesn't raise red flags. Rossman's smoking gun evidence is the inaccurate letterhead that listed Griffith as the interim city manager at the time Blue Crab North asked to be placed on the commission agenda, which was a month and a half after Bell was sworn in. Rossman's red flag that is raised in this transaction involves the hidden relationship between Jonathan Griffith and Charles Douglas as this land swap was first proposed and began working its way through the process of consideration than the city government. Hidden, as previously shown, the relationship was not hidden. Rossman never bothered to contact Mr. Douglas. Griffith had no personal business or financial interests in the proposed swap. He took no role in the discussions or development of the proposal. He had no vote in the matter, nor did he bind the city to any contracts with Blue Crab North. Rossman lifts no example of actual improper or unethical behavior. If he had found anything that would support those insinuations, you can bet he would have put it in his report. But that's not what we have. Instead, we have the original allegation by the anonymous source that was operating out in the shadows, pointing to public records which are factually correct. And then Rossman's conclusion that that already long published association of business interests on completely different matters is somehow enough of a conflict to create the appearance of impropriety. The irony here is that the only appearance of impropriety is actually what Rossman himself has raised by his incendiary statements in his report, which has since been published in the local and regional press. There was no actual conflict of interest. Rossman alleges the city was operating blindly in this transaction. The lack of candor relating to disclosures by the parties calls into question the transaction. A cursory review of the timeline of events in this transaction reveals that Bell was the city manager when the agenda application was submitted. Griffith, on the other hand, resigned before the final voting approving the land swap occurred. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Alexander.
Jeremy Alexander, one seventeen North Second Street, Palatka, part four and the final part. Rossman asks, were other parties blocked out? The simple answer is no. No other party responded to the public notice request for proposals. Commissioners were met with individually and each commissioner had an op, open and ample opportunity to contribute their suggestions as to how to improve the proposal for their constituents' benefit. If Mr. Bell or other commissioners had any question that Griffith's business relationship with Mr. Douglas on other unrelated matters had any impact on the River Center land swap, they would not have moved forward with the process that resulted in the commissioners approving the deal. The commissioners were fully aware of the ongoing investigation into Griffith when they made the final decision regarding the River Center. Contrary to the report, Mr. Griffith did not intentionally conceal his business interests with Mr. Charles D. Douglas Junior, nor was the city operating blindly when it approved the land swap on September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. The obviously poor quality of the investigation and report regarding the River Center land swap calls into question the competency and validity of the entire investigation. For these reasons, I publicly request Mr. Rossman retract any implication of impropriety for Mr. Douglas regarding the River Center land swap and apologize for the reputational harm that he has already caused. I also ask this commission to completely dismiss the report. As we, as we build on the community dialogue developed over the past few weeks, I would respectfully encourage the commission to consider some of the offered solutions to the issue of anonymous complaints and the issue of formal reporting and maintaining statements of potential conflicts of interest. Let's move past the discord and distraction as we move forward with community-centric collaboration. Finally, commissioners should request a refund. While somebody may have gotten our money's worth, it certainly wasn't the citizens of Palatka. A postscript suggestion. In the future, when an office holder, employee, or private citizen is responding to an agenda item presentation that impunes their character with allegations of wrongdoing, the courtesy of equal time to defend one's name and reputation would be appreciated. We were initially told that we would have time allotted as an agenda presentation. After the draft agenda was published and our item was not listed, we were informed just four days prior to the meeting that a decision was made that it would be more appropriate for our response to occur through public comment. There is a saying that a lie can travel around the world and back again while the truth is lacing up its boots. The truth should not be further hobbled by the constraints of the limited time allowed in public comment. Basic due process would allow a fuller response. Thank you.
Why do we keep running into the same issue with regards to time? We, for the last couple of meetings, we have ran into the same issue where citizens have stated that they thought they were going to be on the agenda for one specific thing, only to come and find out that it's something completely different. I know for a fact for at least the last four meetings, we have run and I can call them by name if I need to. But why are we continuously running into the same issue?
We're also in the middle of public comment, so like.
I get it. But this is something that we've been addressing for the last couple of meetings.
So in our pre-agenda meeting, I actually thought that I could be able to put them on as a part of. Initially, I thought that they could be as a public. I think I had them near the presentation, but once I met with staff and we went through the entire agenda, we realized that the only place that they could be placed under would be public comments. Because it's not like we're seeking guidance for direction from the commissioners. It's not regular business. And so we then made a decision, and I can take that responsibility, that the only logical place that we could put their response would be under public comments. And at this time, I don't think that we have another area, at least I was not informed.
They actually ended up with more time when you look at it.
Right.
With, uh, they would have gotten five minutes.
I get everything that you all are saying, but as far as with regards to us having to continuously address the same thing with regards to the allocated time of what a citizen think they are going to be allocated versus what they're getting. We even asked that if there was to be that decision to be made, that it be communicated to the commission prior to getting to a meeting so that we are not caught off guard and we are not looking as if we're not giving the citizens the opportunity to speak to what they need to speak to. Again, I can speak to four, at least four to five individuals who have come up here and we've been met with the same thing that they have wanted to come and be presented on an agenda only to get here and they're not. And we asked, the entire commission asked that we be put abreast of if a citizen that we know have been requested to be on the docket for whatever reason, that they do not be, that they, if they are not, that it's communicated to us so it does not appear as if we made the decision not to give them the allocated time that they thought they were going to be allowed it.
I agree. I do remember that. Thank you.
Constance Daniels.
And this is going to be another one.
Good afternoon or evening, Constance Daniels, six ten Bronson Street. I am Constance Daniels and I'm seeking the appointment as interim interim city manager. On December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, I sought to get on the commission's agenda to no avail due to the cancellation of the meeting. I later received an email from Ms. Jones, the director, that the position was not advertised, hence unavailable. I'm persistent because I believe that I'd be a good fit as interim city manager. I meet the qualifications that are listed as city manager. My education is equal to that of a candidate who was prior, previously interested. I've practiced longer, but I have the same education and qualifications. I have a BA in political science and a JD in law. I've managed seven to eight attorneys for approximately seven years as a managing attorney. And I've applied for the city manager position that is currently open to demonstrate my commitment to this position. Appointing me as interim city manager would give me a head start, head start for the city manager position should I receive an appointment and/or be hired. The income that was previously offered to the prior candidate is acceptable to me. I ask that the commission entrust me with the position as interim city manager because I believe that I can be instrumental with getting the city past the phase that it's in right now in a positive forward movement. On August twenty-fourth, in a meeting here, the current interim city manager, Ms. Carty, indicated that she needed to give the finance department more attention than she'd been given. She's the finance director and she does not have a problem being the full-time finance director. Because of her position regarding not being, having problems being the full-time director, she indicates that she would do and respect whatever the commissioners do. she indicates that she would do and respect whatever the commissioners do and she'd be in support thereof. Accordingly, because Ms. Carty would like to be the full-time director, I'm here again to seek the appointment as interim city manager. I've emailed each commissioner correspondence regarding this matter as well as my application for the permanent city manager position. Thank you for your time.
Tasha Givens.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I don't think the mic is.
It's on. The, it's on. Can you stop my tone because I need all of it?
Yeah, stop. Hers is down.
Happy New Year. My name is Tasha Givens. I live here in Palatka. I'm gonna be quick because I know you guys are tired. First, I want to say thank you Commissioner Campbell for the recent town hall that we had. Thank you for giving what we could, we could hear from the citizens and also get feedback. This is what I have to say. So good evening to everyone in your respective places. Are we doing all that we can to protect our city and its citizens from every aspect of potential harm? As it was said at the town hall that was held, I want to say last week, if you see something, then say something. Now, with that being said, the Channel Four News shared some interesting information on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, in which they stated that they obtained records from, or records pertaining to the St. John's land swap, you know, that building. Now, my question is, is this information that the Channel Four News displayed, and I will ask you to pull up the video, but I don't think I have enough time, but if you all will in your spare time on YouTube, pull it up, December twenty-first. The Channel Four News shared some, I'm assuming, maybe I shouldn't assume, some facts or some information. My question is, is this information considered facts or is it hearsay that was obtained by the Channel Four News, which was also displayed on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four? If this information was obtained from the city's public records, then I believe we're dealing with facts. So that's a question that I have. Like you said before, if we see something and we should say something, even though information was given anonymously, I believe based on your findings and even before that, and even now, the city has public records, which means at any point of time, any one of you, and from what I understand, you're like the highest in the city as far as being a commissioner and mayor. And I myself as a citizen, we all have access to this information. So if you need facts or if you need information, you have it. And I sat here during some of your city commission meetings last year and I witnessed the information that was presented from your planning department, I want to say zoning in regards to the property on Kelly Smith Road or Mellon, whatever you want to call it. There are some facts there and we are dealing with some facts. So my question is, are we turning a blind eye? Now, your attorney, you spoke very well. I don't have a degree in law, but I have common sense. And I would like, and I want to hold you all accountable. You have the responsibility. Now that you know what you know, whether that came from the unanimous thing or not, you have information that's firsthand because it's in your public records.
Finish up please, Ms. Givens.
Right. And I would like to challenge you to dig into your public records and go back as far as you can go and get the facts and bring that to the table. Because to me, what it's looking like, you might have a possible fight on your hands. Now, I'm not sure how many.
Listen, Ms. Givens. Three minutes is up, Ms. Givens. Three minutes is up, please.
Will you let other people go over the three minutes?
And I got scolded for that.
Well, I have another question. Am I able to ask, ask that?
You know, your three minutes are up.
Okay. Well, I did find it pretty interesting that my mic wasn't working tonight, but out of all the people tonight, everybody else's mic worked. So that's a little suspect if you ask me.
Thank you.
But nobody wants to know the facts, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. The facts are there. Is there anybody else here for public comment? There is one more person, but it's on a particular item and we'll get to that later in the agenda. Other than that, so anybody else here for public comment on general items? Seeing no closed public comment, commission and staff response to any of the items raised at public comment?
Sure, just a quick, a quick staff response to the last public comment. The news for Jack's news segment that was run on this was the direct result of a request for the investigative reports that were issued by Mr. Rossman because the reports were considered final at that time. They were at that time available for public records requests and multiple media sources asked for copies of those reports. And that's, that's how they got their information.
Thank you. Commissioner Borlam.
I want to go back to Mr. Shawbaugh's comment about the, the commission was notified of the the business relationship. I'm going to say that that was not true. In, in my opinion, I had no idea that there was any conflicts, conflicts in terms of, well, no, no, business relationship. And in fact, I, I was the only one that voted no on the transaction based on what I had learned from the documents that were presented and what I had seen. So I, that was my reasoning for not moving forward that in addition to the, the, the state of the building as well as the overall benefit to the city. There's another statement that was made as it relates to, and I think the city has a policy as it relates to conflicts of interest that anybody who know that they, they have a conflict of interest, they need to bring that for, to management. In writing or, or otherwise. And so I'm not sure if I knew of any individual who had put forth conflicts of interest. And I think it went into effect to have all employees to August one, I think it was August one that Mr. Bell pushed forward to have that done because when we had that, I looked it up in, on the city, city policies to make sure that we have anybody as the department heads or whoever have authoritative control to be able to make sure that everybody feel out of conflict of interest for. Let's see what else. I think there's another portion we had. And yeah, everybody have an obligation to report if there's any conflicts of interest in. Again, we, the commission, nobody here on the commission put forth no land swaps or no anything, anything else. That all came from staff or what have you. And the commission was not aware of any of those particular things coming forward until we were all pretty much back, but we did not know. And it's on the record.
Anybody else have any comments or responses?
As city manager and interim, interim city manager, I'd like to address one or two items. The first item as it relates to the placement on the agenda initially, you were to be placed on presentation, but going forward, we will make certain that that's done that way. But there was a, a team direction and we were, we thought that putting it on the public comments is where it should be. The other item as it relates to interim city management and finance directorship, both of those functions are being addressed and directed by myself and I'm still very happy to serve the commissioner as they desire. So I just wanted to be certain that I addressed the concern. And as it relates to how do you get on the agenda? One of the requirements as a result of, I believe, Commissioner Campbell directive, we made certain that going forward, that individuals come in, meet with our city manager or interim city manager. Once we have that meeting, they present their information. That is how they get on the agenda. So we do have a process that we are following. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or responses? Thank you. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
See. Item C. Yes, let's, let's.
Or F for conversation.
F?
L.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda excluding items C and F for discussion.
Your motion is second. All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you. On to C, adopt resolution twenty twenty-five R zero one, ratifying a residential purchase and service agreement with Vector Security, Inc. for alarm services. Ms.
We, we do need a motion to approve of all the other items on consent.
We just did. We just did.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought that was a motion to pull.
No, no. Okay, do we need a motion to pull though?
No, I made, the motion was.
He made the motion to approve the rest. Anyway, C, adopt resolution twenty twenty-five R zero one, ratifying a residential purchase and service agreement with Vector Security, Inc. for alarm services. Ms. Carty?
Yes. City clerk advised that because the dollar amount of the security system that we have now purchased back in September, twenty twenty-four, the original amount was four thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars for the equipment and I think an additional thousand or so. But the concern was that the monthly amount over a period of years would eventually exceed twenty-five thousand. So that was the concern that I can understand as to why this was placed on the agenda. So I'm, I'm basically just trying to adhere to what has been done here historically. In my opinion, this amount is still much less than the twenty-five thousand that a person functioning in the city manager will make it spend. But they wanted it to come to this.
Okay. Any question? Go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
Well, this, to be, it's not, it's two things. You, you're still functioning in the capacity of the finance director, so why would the city clerk have to bring it to your attention? And I would have also question for security cameras, I guess, and alarms, panic system, twenty-five thousand dollars. What is, you said, four thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars?
But that was the cost of the equipment and installation. And the monthly, I don't have that in front of me, but I, this was where you, where you involved in the contract because, you know.
No, I didn't see this contract until it was on the agenda.
So in essence, it really, in my opinion, this does not qualify to have to be presented to the commissioners. But I would courtesy it's presented, but I, I know it doesn't go over the dollar amount that can be spent or anything.
For our other buildings, are we using the same company? Because we currently have security contract.
We've only used the vector for this section, this city hall building.
The police department, fire department and Jenkins have security contract?
Chief, Chief Shaw, and this Chief Shaw here, can I?
Public Works here?
Yes, it is.
Let me bring it on.
But for, as far as us, for us, our, we don't have the actual, we're not using the company, no sir. And the, we have a different type of security that allows us to address our confidential areas. We have for our evidence area, I want to say it's.
Not, not that detailed. I just want to know that we have this company servicing all of our building.
No, sir.
And if not, I mean, what made us do a contract that's different or why aren't we umbrellaing the contract so that we have one service provider and we pay them? So what, what was the theory behind it?
Right. When I came on board, there wasn't any security at all for this particular building. And in response to just safeguarding this building, this was the company we had about three or four. But this one was able to address the need and therefore they took care of it. There were other companies that Public Works are using and we are looking at the possibility of, look, I'm not sure what you want there, but we're fine here.
Well, yeah, but my, my question is when we're entering these contracts, shouldn't it be a thought? That should be a thought to umbrella our coverage and maybe it become a discounted rate or what have you. But, and then when we have problems, we could dress it one-stop shop. I, I think that would have been wise, even though this contract is already signed now. And like you said, bringing it here now is a mute point. And so anyway, I just wanted, I wanted to ask the question because it is here and it shouldn't have been, but are we thinking like that? Are we thinking about covering all our properties under, I would like this. Yeah. So do we have all other buildings under different?
The needs.
The directors go and say, well, hey, I like ADT or I like Safe Touch or whatever.
Advanced security, sir, for all of the properties Jenkins, Boathouse, they've currently went out of business. So we've lost our connection. We were trying to connect them all to the same department, but Vectors, new department, they got a great system. It's more user friendly. So we're trying to transfer over.
So the plan is to put everything under vector?
That is correct, sir.
So it was, would have been a problem to do that like now since we're entering this agreement or you have, wouldn't it? Why, why, why aren't we doing it?
I can answer that question mainly. One of the reasons why we went with Vector under these circumstances because they provide different services. There is no other entity within the city that has the panic alarms and things of that nature that Vector was able to provide. So therefore for us, Vector or for here, Vector provided a different service than what we were having on our other companies at the time.
Right. So.
So the needs are different and different heights.
No, but they could provide, Vector could supply the needs to all of our areas is what I'm saying.
I don't think that they're not saying that there aren't going to eventually make it happen.
I, I, Commissioner Mayor, all due respect, I am making a, a suggestion that we moving forward, put everything under one company, which you have here, Vector. And I'm, I'm, I'm really asking, did you explore that option in the cost that's associated with it? Because sometimes if you do it upfront, instead of piecing it after the fact, we have a better deal. So I was trying to find out, which I just did. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And I, I concur with Commissioner Jones, but only if they have the capacity. If they got the capacity to do it, then yes, that's without, if they're going to be inefficient and ineffective, then we will probably make, you know, they might have to do it. But if you can get somebody who can do it under one umbrella contract to provide those services, yeah, by all means. So I'll, I'll wait on the next one.
And we totally agree, but with all due respect, I, again, we are legislators and it's, I think it's the folks' job to come to the best conclusion of what best serves the facilities we have. And so I trust that they will do that.
He got to come.
Can I clear something up or just have a general statement? We are legislators and, but we are responsible for all the city dealing with what goes on. You see what happened here today? It comes back. It comes back to us all the time. So if we're gonna legislate, that's something that we're legislating this budget. And so again, I don't think that's, uh, out of line when we're saying, hey, listen, have you thought about this? And that's all I'm saying, Madam Mayor. So that's not impeding on the way they do day to day operation. That's actually process improvements, exactly what, uh, Douglas firm was saying. Sometimes we are missing the mark and if, maybe if we have an inclusion or comment up here, it could help move things along and solidify like policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borne, Commissioner Davis?
Go ahead, Commissioner. Yeah, I, I just, I just think, you know, whenever we, we have a mic, you ought to have the, um, the freedom to, to, to speak whatever is your issue or concern. And I think that's what, uh, Commissioner Jones was doing and I think that's what each commissioner up here should be able to do. Because you're, 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 you're making sure that you are being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. So we're responsible for it. It lands right here. So I totally agree with Commissioner Jones in that regard. We gotta be respectful of each other up here and when somebody is speaking, just let them, let them complete the statement.
Okay, are you done?
So, so if I may?
Yes, you may.
And during the process of, uh, securing, uh, this particular premise, we did actually look at about four or five different companies. And this was the company that did best address the concerns we have here. And, and the utility, uh, Public Works is correct that as we did that, we realized that we do need to look at the other buildings.
We certainly do. They're voting us on the other buildings to switch the.
Vector is, right, right.
So we are working on the search, so.
Thank you.
Try to get all my facts.
Thanks, you. Seeing that, is there anybody here for public comment on C? Here, seeing none, we're closed public comment. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
To approve. The motion is second. All in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. On to F, adopt resolution twenty twenty five R zero four, authorizing an FY twenty twenty four twenty five budget transfer in the amount of four, four thousand two hundred and thirty two, four, uh, four hundred twenty three, three ninety four eighteen from city share downtown streetscapes with a county led St. John's Avenue reconstruction resurfacing project.
So I would like to address that. Uh, during the budgeting process, uh, we lost the key personnel. And that was the individual that had more understanding of the breakout of the various projects. However, they did submit the total amount required. And submitting that amount, um, during budgeting, uh, the entire amount was, was placed in city share downtown streetscapes. However, a portion of it was really for resurfacing and striping. So recently, when we received, um, the final payment for that resurfacing, we were trying to identify where, where's the money, where's it placed? And it had been placed in city share. So what we are now doing is moving it from city share to resurfacing and stripping where it actually belongs. The other side of this project is that this is a project that is both grant funded and city share. We just recently received the analysis from the engineer now that we have staff on board. And the total amount required to complete the streetscapes is one point four million. The balance that is in the grant section is one million thirty two thousand. And we still have more than enough to complete. We actually have one million five hundred eleven thousand dollars. So this is, um, correcting where the amount of funds were placed in the budgeting process. Uh, that key personnel, we had three key personnels leave during budgeting. The remaining person did make sure that it was placed in budgeting. And so that's what you say we're dealing with here.
Okay, that, that was not my reason for, why I asked the pilot. The reason I asked the pilot was to kind of have a conversation about the quality of work that, um, St. John's have been receiving, uh, since the pro- inception of the project. If you look at nineteenth and St. John's Avenue, um, that, that, that whole project was piecemeal. And it's, uh, I hope we have a retainer on it in terms of, we haven't paid the full amount on the job. Because, uh, it's the poor quality of work when you, when you first get there, nineteenth and St. John's, you got a big dip. It took a while for them to finish that last piece up. And as you go down St. John's or you go toward from nineteenth all the way up to Palm, it's poor quality work throughout that whole thing. And, and, and if we're still within the, cause you, you look at every intersection. The, the, the quality of the work it looked like, and I know it's gonna come apart here in just a second. And then the other piece, that Ms., piece that Ms., Ms. Duke was talking about, the additional poor quality work at the intersection with the, with the brickwork. We're paying these people the monies and we need the quality of work that the citizens deserve. It's a eyesore for quality work and we should not be giving them the, the full amount of money until they get this, th- this project right.
Mayor? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Davis. I would like to call a point of order, not to silence anyone, but we are here to consider just moving money to correct an entry. I'm just not sure that this conversation belongs here. I just don't want to go down a rabbit hole. And if I'm incorrect, I stand corrected.
Well, uh, we, we, I understand that piece of it, but the, the thing what we were talking about St. John's and it is also a good, I think it was the appropriate time to speak about that because I'm, I'm speaking on a, a, a public comment as well as an item that was on there that was gonna be on the, um, on our, um, consent agenda. And I think those are some good point, good areas where you can kind of talk a little bit about the, the, the various things as it relates. So that's why I brought, brought that up during that time.
As a result, I have brought up Public Works to explain about how we're gonna confirm that that quality work is completed.
Uh, we're talking about for the intersections and the, the rubber marks on the, uh, bricks themselves. Um, they did come out themselves, a company that we feel is responsible for DNS. They tried to clean it several times, several, several times. We brought in our own people to clean it just recently. They blew all the rocks out. We're in the process of getting them all reset. Uh, we think they did a fairly decent, I believe they did a fairly decent job up to this point, but yes, they should do a better job.
I do know, I.
I do know when Mr. Bell was here, that was, uh, an issue at that time. And he, he specifically mentioned those intersections and how they were gonna do the correction and the cleaning of the bricks. So I think, you know, before we pay all of that money out and don't, then hopefully they gotten, they haven't gotten a retainer. Just, we want to make sure that we're giving the citizens what they deserve.
Yes, sir, of course.
Thank you. Um, with that said, is there any more discussion about resolution twenty twenty five? I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment on that item? Seeing none, we're closed public comment. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, your motion is second. All in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. On to regular business. Do we want to take a recess?
Yes, we do.
Okay, then we can. A recess for ten minutes, please, and be back in ten minutes, which is exactly eightish. That what it says? I can't see. Nineish, nineish. I can't see. Nineish. I wish it was eightish. Okay. On to regular business, discussion direction, interim city manager. I'm not sure who wanted this on the agenda. Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Uh, Madam Mayor, um, Commissioners, this is on the agenda. Um, due to, um, it being moved from the agenda where we didn't have Quorum. And then on when we did have another agenda, um, it was brought in as an emergency item. So it was never cleared up, that, um, that was attempted to bring in as an emergency item, I say, but it failed.
Okay.
Um, the reason it's back on the agenda, after discussion with the liaison, when we, this process went through, um, in regards to the counter offer from Mr. Hill, um, I did, um, communicate with the liaison at that time that there were commissioners that didn't feel this should have just died like that for it to be back on. So I haven't had direction until this is totally cleared to remove it. So the recommendation was if it was the will of the commission to bring the contract and was, uh, was not an issue, the terms and the salary was the issue. So if it was the will of the commission to restart this process, um, as it pertains to Mr. Hill, that, that's why it was on here or was this gonna be the end of it with the will of the commission? Not just from the processes that was given direction to us prior?
You say that's your determination? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Who, who determination?
That it should go back on? On, this was put back on because I had other commissioners and I communicated that to you that did not agree that it should end at the end of that discussion, okay? So it was back on it and I asked the question of those commissioners, did they want to see it back on the agenda? It was yes. So we haven't had a full discussion with the commission to say this item is gonna be dead altogether, removed, or the negotiating is gonna start over from another process. That direction has never been obtained.
Okay, what is everybody, what, anybody have a thought on that? Given that, we have to have some thought as to whether we want to, um, end this whole discussion in terms of interim city manager or we want to continue negotiating. I think we negotiated in good faith and it didn't work. Um, I don't know what anybody else's thoughts are. That's just mine. And I think it's just time to move on to hiring a permanent city manager.
I think it would be remiss if I don't make a statement and I'll go with the will of commission. But at the time where the conversation was brought forth. When you think of negotiation, I I do believe that the situation. Did not end to me properly. There was not a official contract that was given to Mr. Hill to go off of. So that's the only reason why I was of the component to. Bring it back before the commission so that it could end correctly. And it has gone so. So again, I'll be with the pleasure of. The commission, but I did, I but I wanted to make sure that I made the statement that I was one of the individuals. That stated, I don't think that it ended properly. I think it was an abrupt stop and it didn't give Mr. Hill the opportunity to respond because there was not essentially. A full fledged contract that went to him for consideration, just an amount.
Anybody else have any thoughts? So what direction would we like to give Ms. Jones?
I'm just gonna make my comment. My comment is that. We had a report. Of where we are in the process of hiring a permanent city manager. We've been over a hundred days with Ms. Cardy filling the role of assistant city manager. And we have. Had whatever process we had, it is what it is. And it ended in no contract agreement at this time. Regardless as to whether it was ended abruptly. From what I read on the staff report. I don't consider that a staff recommendation. There is no recommendation. They're coming to ask the commission what's their pleasure. Again, I'm. I want to see us focus on getting a permanent city manager. We got, we received good guidance from the consultant tonight. And I think what we all heard is that we have a lot of work to do. In addition, I will say that coming on as a new commissioner, I had the opportunity to meet. The department heads. And from what I can see in the conversation I had. Our staff is working. At a hundred and ten percent capacity and I cannot even begin to estimate. The resources they have and Mel's case is not enough. To that point, I just want to make sure that we consider. To maintain the level of stability that we have at this point. Yes, we have a lot of opportunity. We have some issues that are being addressed. But I'd like to see us focus our energy on getting a permanent city manager.
Anybody else have any comments?
I I concur with Commissioner Davis as it relates to where we are right now in the process. We have done a due diligence from what we've offered and I think it failed. And so again, trying to force something in at this point or at this juncture. Would be a disservice to the 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 staff. It'd be a disservice to. What we're trying to do as it relates to where we're at in the mature process of. Of finding a permanent city manager. Again, we're at the point to where we got the candidates ready for. Interviews and to see discourse and indecision. That's not where we we need to be.
I would also say, I don't think there's any discourse, but I hope that we learn from this process. And that as we move forward and we began to get to the point to where we offer candidates the opportunity. That we are clear in our actions and moving forth and that we move when we move forth, we move forth with a full. Contract and not just numbers. So I hope that we've taken from this. There's always a lesson and I believe the lesson is as we proceed forward to move forth with a contract and not just numbers and terms.
So with that said, is the consensus that at this point we're not seeking another interim city manager that our focus is going to be strictly on hiring up somebody in that role permanently? Is that the consensus? Okay, thank you. So we don't need to have it anymore on the agenda.
And finally, our next item is team building. In that we have followed the directive of our city commissioners. Even in our staff, in our role as workers or leaderships, we are. Having assessments and having individuals come and work with our employees. So. Ms. Jones, can you please?
As for the team building on December, let me try to get the dates right here. On December the eleventh, we sent out from human resources, the three companies that we had originally. Had applied with us when we utilized Whitson for our last team building at Topgolf. The three other companies and the direction was to see if they were still available. We did send out. An update. Abby would have sent out an update that all were available for team building exercise in January. We may have to push it back a little bit now because of time, but they were available. What they did, what so at this point, what they wanted was direction on what it is that you guys were seeking. For them to provide so that they could send us updated pricing within their contract. Because these are like a year old. So we just try, I am just seeking direction to go back to them on whichever one you may. Are for all of them and see what pricing we get. So what is the direction of what you want to see provided during the team building exercise?
To add to that, direction was basically. Whatever these three different firms are able to provide. So we, I did look at these and. I I would say that they're all equally qualified. And generally, we take the approach of, you know, the three different prices. One is two thousand seven hundred fifty, one is forty eight hundred. One is three thousand two hundred fifty. I I would suggest that we consider since they're all equally qualified. Utilizing that two thousand seven hundred fifty, but.
Right. And you said the price, though, is going to be changed because that was a year ago.
It is.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Borum first.
The on what what we would want, at least if I could speak for myself in terms of what what I want in terms of. Providing, I say we provide them with the initial report because there's a lot of information. That went into that and I don't know if that information has been afforded to our new commissioner coming on board.
The initial team building report?
Yes.
Yes, I'll make sure she gets it.
Okay, well, we need to get her everything that she needs. There's a lot of different documents she's going to need and make sure that she's caught up. Caught up on on speed and I'm going to provide everything I know to. See the clerk or see the manager. So but she need to be caught up on a lot of, lot of different things. So that's what I would say that need to go for with the team building. They need to have that information that we. Had at that session.
Commissioner Davis.
You want, so just so that I'm clear, you want the team building exercise results to be sent to these organizations?
Well, no, whoever whoever we whoever we acquire, I mean, if we select one. They need that information to know where we where we were. I I would believe at least.
Commissioner, Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, I I might can, I have questions, so maybe my questions can bring some clarification. So when I looked at this and I don't know, let me be clear. So obviously, there's some information that directed the commission towards this. Team building event. Because when I read this report that I have here. In the agenda packet, I had a few questions. One was. You know, how are we seeking vendors if we have not provided the scope of work? The other thing is, Ms. Cardy, I will say, I'm not sure I agree with your statement that they're equally qualified. I don't know if they're qualified or not. These, these proposals that we have are from twenty twenty three, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly. And. And they're pretty generic. I just don't think they provide enough guidance. Again, I know I'm coming blind, but just from a process. Perspective of determining a an organization to provide. Team building to address a specific need. I'm assuming there's a specific need if we have some reports. And so I think we need to identify that before we even go out to see who can drive it. And then my other question is. Is there a particular reason, again, based on me not having history of why we're asking private vendors? Is there an opportunity to go to the Florida League of Cities and while they may not do a specific. Event for just us, I don't know. Is there an opportunity to see if they provide some. Training class? And again, I'm coming from a new perspective, so I am looking for correction if needed. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Campbell.
I don't think that this needs to be up for discussion until we hire a city manager.
Okay.
One of the things that we did the last time. I don't want to say it wasn't to benefit. We brought a city manager on after we had the. Session at Topgolf. So I don't believe that this conversation should be had until it needs some. We have a candidate in the position permanently so that they're able to be a part of. That session, which will give us the opportunity to really further that what we desire as a commission. But again, I don't want to see someone sitting in in time capacity take a part in a team building exercise and they not be. I want staff to be established so that as we go forth, we know that we're going forth with a solid team. And not having to deal with another transition as we had to do the last time we had a team building exercise. So.
Yes, sir. Thank you for guidance. Thank you.
Thank you. Without any further discussion, we'll move on to public hearings. Oh, you had something else. I'm sorry.
While we're in regular, while we're in regular business, is this one where I can do the emergency item here? Okay.
Put it down here.
It's sometime at work and sometime it doesn't.
Get that man a new battery.
Sometime at work this morning.
Okay, on to public hearings ordinance twenty twenty four fifteen establishing the McLaury Cove Townhome. Community planned unit development possible number as we see ten ten twenty six zero 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 zero. One, three, zero, 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 one, ten, 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 twenty six, zero, 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 two, zero, 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 six, zero, first reading.
The resolution or ordinance number will suffice.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. I learned from Sunny, so I'll just. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Agamo.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This application is for an approval of a plan unit development known as the McLaury Cove Townhouse Community. And considered about thirty one acres in total. If you remind, recall, this was recently resumed by the city commission. Given that in the category of R three, which is residential multiple. Units with an overlay B U D. The applicant intends to develop the property as a planned unit development with two hundred and forty eight townhome dwelling units. Given a maximum density of eight units per acre. This application was reviewed by staff pursuant to section ninety four two thirty three of our zoning code. Which establishes a standard for which a P U D has to be measured with. As it is described in the staff report, which is part of your package, the application is consistent. With the standard for approval subject to conditions describing the staff report. Based on that, staff recommends to the city commission approve the request. And adopt the ordinance on first reading. And the applicant is here also to, if you have any question to to the applicant and I'm happy to answer any question in my head.
Okay, would the applicant like to come forward and provide any additional information?
Good evening, Shaleen Estes, one, four, seven, eight, five, Old St. Augustine Road, St. Jacksonville. I am here for questions. You. Have heard what Lorenzo has provided and I can provide any other additional feedback if you'd like it.
Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Estes? Go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
I'm just curious. Understanding any major process delays in the standard process of getting to this development. What's your target timeline for development, please?
I know somebody else up there that asked that question every time I'm up here. We are ready to move forward. So it has been a very long journey to get here and we are very happy to be here, but we are absolutely ready to get going. So immediately, I mean, the development itself will take anywhere between eighteen, twenty four months. So once we get through our approval, then you can expect that development will mobilize out there and start immediately.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay.
Any possible disclosures of conflict interest before we get?
I have none, but thank you.
Um, we do. As to that point, though, for Commissioner Jones, just for your edification. We have adopted new policies within the planning department for every single applicant that comes through. They do have to disclose not only their corporate entities, but every single manager that's a member of that corporation, four star has done that at our request. So I I just want you to know that we are taking steps to address the conflict of issue issues.
Not only that, we have also added and reactivated the development review committee because that was not functioning. Properly, but now it is. So before it comes here, the entire departments that are involved with development. Are brought into the meeting and the potential developer makes a presentation. And then whatever the issues are that we're not aware of, each department will state it. So we have changed the process and improved it at your direction.
Thank you. Anybody else? We do have somebody here for public comment, Mr. Nielsen. Please give your name and city of residence.
Gary Nielsen, live on sixty one oh eight Fourth Manor West, Palatka. Cul-de-sac, right behind my house is where they plan on building this development. And I'm not speaking just for me, I'm speaking for the neighborhood. They, I lost the lottery and I'm here. You understand? So anyway, we just have a few questions. I know I'm not supposed to put my questions toward her, but I will toward it toward it anyway. Good evening to the board members. Good seeing you, Annie up there. We we'd like to know, first of all, what is the distance going to be from? The back of the development, the very back to the property on. Deerwood, actually it's Deerwood subdivision. They said it has to be like a hundred and fifty foot and you're only talking fifty yards. And that was one of the concerns of the people. They don't feel like fifty yards is enough. And 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 being the townhouses, how high will the fence be? Will it be and and high, how how high will the? The townhouses be? We want a fence to see if there was a fence that could be put up or they couldn't look out their window into our backyard. Because it's going to be that close. And another question was the retention pond. Where would the retention pond be put? And you answered one of the questions a while ago about when the project will begin. They said eighteen to twenty four months, possibly, whatever. But these are the concerns that we have in our neighborhood about this coming. I've lived there for almost twenty six years. Built my house out there, love it out there, but we have a lot of concerns. Uh, built my house out there, love it out there, but uh we have a lot of concerns right now of what's going in.
Thank you. Mr. Agama, maybe you can help with a couple of the responses to that question?
Yes. If you measure the wall to wall from what the townhouses to the existing residences adjacent to the property, it's about forty feet from the wall of the townhouse to the property line. And from that property line is another twenty-six feet to the, to the house. So it's about sixty, sixty-five feet, sixty-six, more or less. Separation. And also it's gonna have a buffer, you, you know, our, our code requires them to put a buffer between the two uh properties.
And the retention pond was the other.
The retention pond is to the other side of the, of, in the opposite side of where the residential development is right now.
Thank you.
And maybe Charlie can expand a little bit on that.
Come on on. Just so we have all the facts from Mr. Nielsen and the rest of the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so yes, the, um, if we could go back to the site plan, that might be helpful. Um, the we designed the site, so the pond is on the west side of the north piece um to be adjacent to the pond that's at the apartment complex for that very reason, um to buffer again. Um, Lorenzo was correct, um, there is approximately almost sixty feet between the back of the building and the other residential community um houses. So we have complied with our, with the land development code to meet that buffer, to put the, you know, fencing up. Um, that, that one would work. It's okay. No, 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 it's fine. Um, just the site plan itself. Um, you see where the pond is on the apartment complex to the west on that northern portion. Um, the pond will, is located up in that portion as well. Yeah, up in that area right there, to the west, yeah. And I think that was the all the questions?
Yes.
That goes all the way from Saint John's to twenty?
I'm sorry?
That property goes all the way from Saint John's Avenue to twenty, State Road twenty?
Um, no, sir, not all the way. Um, McLaurie Drive is there and before you even get to Creel or twenty.
Oh, that's what, oh, my bad.
Yes, sir.
I was up to ask you that, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
Just my clarification, edification, when you say buffer.
Yes, ma'am.
Does buffer mean space? Does buffer mean this fence that was just questioned?
To answer your question blatantly, the, all the above, there's gonna be fencing, there's landscaping, there's space. Um, again, we are exceeding the land development code on that section purposely because these are very long lots, um, because the space is available. Um, so um, and the landscaping will be, you know, in the surrounding area as well as a um, the project itself will have fencing around it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, our, our, our buildings do not exceed thirty-five feet and that's the building maximum height in the city. Oh, the fences with code six feet. It's a six-foot fight. That's, that's what code is, sir.
Okay, yeah, we can't have a dialogue going back and forth.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I thought I answered him off, but any other questions for me?
Um, I don't think we have any more questions here. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that said, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Uh.
Aye, any opposition? Thank you. On to B, ordinance twenty twenty-four sixteen, rezoning one-ten South State Road nineteen. Resone from general commercial C one to intensive commercial C two. Mr. Agama?
Yes, this is a request for the rezoning uh of a parcel of land on State Road seven and the corner of uh Saint John's. The request to change from existing zoning of general commercial to intensive commercial. The reason for the rezoning is that um they want to place an ATM kiosk at that property with the Bank of America. And bank and financial institution is not permitted in the, in the C one, but it is permitted in the C two. And that's the reason of the rezoning. We have reviewed the project before. Uh, we missed all the requirements. We checked for the zoning uh standard and they need all the standard for rezoning and we're formally approved on first reading.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Pelosi, do you have any additional information you wanna share?
Walton Pelosear, one thirty-two Buffalo Bluff Road, Palatka, uh co-owner of the property and here to answer any questions that you may have that I can take care of.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I know it needs to get done because the ATM is to move or be moved from its current location as of February and as a Bank of America uh banker, that's the only.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Uh, do you open up, is there anybody here for public comment? Excuse me, Junopa. Saying no, we're closed, public no comment. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, sidebar note, um, y'all might wanna appropriate a little money for your P A system repairs.
I agree with you. Secondly.
County, the county's gonna give us some.
Commissioner Borum, this would be your opportunity.
Commissioner Borum, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I'd like to make a emergency uh, add an emergency item and that would be to um request that we allow for the wa- water tower to be funded at the said amount, I think it was two hundred fifty thousand. Approximately two hundred fifty thousand dollars to um repair those.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all in favor? Any opposition? Thank you.
Thank you.
Listen, I knew she, I knew she was gonna get ready to say something. So we accepted it as an emergency.
Right.
That what you basically saying, so it can be official.
Madam.
That was to add the emergency item, you're right. I could see the look too, just as soon as I said that. Okay, go ahead.
Make the motion to approve the um water tower repair not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Second.
The motion is second. All, all in favor? Any opposition? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, Commissioner comments?
I just wanna say thank you for those that attended, um, both staff and citizens that took out the time to um attend the town hall. I do believe that it was well attended as well as um some things of substance were um brought up that we are going to take into consideration to the citizens. I have already started working with the city manager. Um, and we actually have buy-in from individuals who know, who doesn't even live in our city. Um, so we want to make sure that as we move forth, we are not moving forward just hasty. Um, we want to make sure that we move forth with things that are actually tangible and to take into consideration. Um, our next steps is to get um to bring chief of police um into the picture as well as some other stakeholders. But we are not sitting idle. We are moving in the background and we look forward to bringing some type of round two um to the discussion to make citizens aware that we are moving and we're not just sitting idle posting.
Any other comments from any other commission?
I just wanna thank um to, I wanna give a thanks to the city manager. Interim city manager to our H R department for helping me to onboard and making things happen very quickly. Um, I just wanna say I really appreciate it and um, thank you.
You're welcome. Do anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanna, I'll say thanks to the community for coming out to hear us deliberate. I'd like to thank the staff for the wonderful job that they have done, not just today, but in the past and going into the future. Also, I'd like to thank um Commissioner Davis for her input here today. She, it doesn't sound like a, a first-time commissioner. She sounds like a veteran.
Yes.
So uh, and, 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 so uh, I think she's gonna be a positive force here for, for the city. So I look forward to continue to uh work alongside.
Mr. Jones, anything? I'm silent too. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, 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 I'm sorry, please. I can't say nothing. Okay, bye.
Now to go ahead and say what she wants.
Hank Bryant, Hank Bryant bathroom is now being started.
Thank you.
Okay, and um, the lab project is complete.
All right.
And also, we did.
But that's good news.